Good evening, and I apologize for our delay. We were having to finish some unfinished business. Before we start the meeting, I'm going to certify our motion for closed meeting. In order to comply with Section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on October 10, 2019, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, and considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Motion made by Mr. McElveen, seconded by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor? That's unanimous. The motion carries. This October 10, 2019, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Oakton High School Orchestra under the direction of Max Oppenheimer.
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wasn't that amazing? Thank you so much. I know call for an anchor is correct.
While they're leaving the stage, I just want to go ahead and, we're blown away. Thank you, Mr. Oppenheimer, and your students, and your singer. That's a first for me, seeing a singer come along with you. So thank you so much for all your work.
A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. Item 5.03, Elementary Professional Development School Internship Program, has been removed from tonight's agenda and will be rescheduled at a later date. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. I call on Ms. Boateng for an announcement.
National School Lunch Week is officially scheduled for October 14 through 18 by an act of Congress. Using the theme "School Lunch: What's on Your Playlist?", spotlights the wide variety of flavors, dishes, delivery options, and tastes that can be customized in today's school lunch. National School Lunch Week promotes excitement about the benefits of students consuming wholesome, healthy, school... healthy school lunches of fresh fruits and veggies, whole grains, and milk. The National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children, and has been joined through the years by many other excellent child nutrition programs. There is a continued need for nutrition education and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs, and the School Board encourages all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits in hope of achieving a more healthful citizenry for today and the future. Did you know that October is National Disabilities Employment and Awareness Month? This year's theme is "The Right Talent Right Now." Each year, Fairfax County's Public Schools participates in the National Disability Employment Awareness Month, which promotes career development for individuals with disabilities through hands-on career exploration and job shadowing in the following fields: administrative support, animal care, business management, communications, information technology, and parks and recreation. NDEAM strives to encourage students to explore potential career or employment opportunities to learn more about businesses in their community and begin to plan to achieve more successful employment outcomes.
Thank you, Ms. Boateng. At this time, we will open the public hearing on the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan. The Virginia Department of Education requires each local school board to adopt by enally a Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan. The 2019 Plan includes pertinent data from the fiscal year 19 student achievement goal monitoring reports, which highlights academics, essential life skills, and responsibility to the community. Additional information is included about the enrollment projections, technology, parent involvement, and cooperation with neighboring school divisions. Board action on the plan is scheduled for October 24, 2019. If you have not registered to speak tonight but would like to have the opportunity to address the Board, please see one of the clerks to sign up for one of the five extra-reserved speaker slots. Tonight, we have one speaker, and that is Mr. Norm Hall, representing SEPTA.
Good evening. Excuse me. I'm Norm Hall, advocacy co-chair of the Fairfax County Special Education PTA. From 22 to 15 years ago, I was an operations manager for the National Transit Database. I supervised seven staff who validated financial and operating data reported by all transit agencies getting federal assistance. I had to know and teach how to look at data for consistency in light of explanations that were provided devoutly for thousands of data points. I was responsible for the front-end communications through many letters and phone calls that suggested that agencies either revise or explain unusual data. If not reasonable, data would be deleted or flagged as questionable. So, I come prepared, equipped, with experience in how to make analytic comments on the information I have seen and heard pertaining to students with disabilities enrolled in Fairfax County Public Schools. Good news: while the 40-page comprehensive plan does not show a complete roadmap for success through links to the district's strategic plans and prior-year budgeting, there are no sections that are problematic or questionable. The administration has posted information here that credibly describes the current state of the school system. No surprises. There's bad news, but this is not a stain on FCPS. No, my complaint is with whoever prepared the poor question for School Board candidates two weeks ago. Drainsville and at-large School Board member candidates were asked why FCPS has twice the rate of special education students compared to Montgomery County schools, citing a Washington Association of Boards of Education report. I found the wavy report on the FCPS website, did the math myself, saw the grossly exaggerated claim for what it was. My concern is that this deception played to the falsehood that too many resources go to students with disabilities in Fairfax County. Candidates were clearly in no position to call out this unbelievably biased question, and time was wasted that could have been much better spent on how to improve needed services. A bad outcome for both candidates and citizens. However, having just watched the video of Monday night's work session, sorry, it was afternoon for you, on the 2021 budget, I am thrilled to see that both staff and many members of this school are gearing up to develop ways to improve special education. The comprehensive plan doesn't forecast these nascent events; they came as a very pleasant surprise to me. Thank you. Now is a good time to note other positive news since the end of last school year. Just last week, the ombudsman's office was organized to include support for employees. Turning to the planned document, on page 5, the former school division objective states that FCPS will eliminate gaps in opportunity, access, and achievement for all students. Now, this is appropriate, and here's where I have had a concern. Why does the comprehensive plan stop with assessment data for the last school year? We know that the 2019 data is publicly available from VDOE's website. Ideally, each school's community of families, teachers, and staff should be able to see for themselves whether overall improvements are being seen at their individual schools. Right now, this level of information is not available through the FCPS website. We would like to see this functionality restored to what it was just one year ago. I have looked ahead to materials for next week's work session on Project Momentum. Thank you for adding Whitman Middle School in Mount Vernon Estates to the SOL Project Momentum work. Nice. Thank you.
Thank you.[945.32][945.32](Applause) Thank you, Mr. Hall. Do we have anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan? Seeing no one, then we will move on with the rest of our meeting. I call on Mrs. Keys-Gamara for a recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will be recognizing 400 years of African-American history in Virginia. This past summer, the state of Virginia held a ceremony in recognition of the arrival of African-Americans on the shores of Virginia some 400 years ago. While this is and has been a momentous date, it is also important to note that according to the Library of Congress, Africans initially came to this new world as adventurers who joined into the age of exploration and crisscrossed the globe. In the early 17th century, a year before the English pilgrims arrived at Plymouth, Massachusetts, a group of Africans arrived in the Jamestown Colony as indentured servants. It was after this period, then on August 25, 1619, that the first enslaved Africans arrived on our shores. They had been stolen by pirates and ended up on an English privateer ship that arrived in desperate need of rations. They landed at Point Comfort, Virginia, seeking to trade their human cargo for provisions, an event that led to more than 250 years of slavery in this nation. When they arrived, slavery did not exist in the English colonies. Africans came to our shores mostly from West Africa. At the dawn of the era of transatlantic slavery, Africa was a vast and diverse land, the home of many ancient cultures. West Africa was a land marked by a rich and varied culture that had long been the site of trading posts with the Europeans, and was a major center for scholarship that included the work of astronomers, mathematicians, and theologians. Africans who arrived in Virginia brought the skills of their homeland, including herding, blacksmithing, and artistry, along with their own culture and beliefs. Africans came ashore at Point Comfort, which is present-day Fort Monroe in Hampton, Virginia. President Barack Obama declared Fort Monroe a national monument in 2011. Ironically, it was this same Point Comfort that is now known as Fort Monroe that served a pivotal role during the Civil War. The status of enslaved African-Americans after the Confederate states engaged in the Civil War became an issue early in 1861. Major General Butler, commander of the fort, learned that three slaves made their way to Point Comfort, presented themselves to the Union Army, and refused to return to slave owners who supported the Confederacy. The three African-Americans, Frank Baker, James Townsend, and Shepherd Mallory, had been leased by their masters to assist the Confederate Army. These men escaped at night and sought asylum at Fort Monroe. When the Confederate major requested the men's return, the Union major refused. He based that decision on the belief that the Confederate states had succeeded from the United States, and the laws that would have mandated the return of the slaves was now null and void. The African-Americans began working for the Union Army and eventually received pay for their services to the Union Army and the Union Navy. This marked the practice and development of the authorization of African military units, where thousands of former slaves and free African-Americans began to enlist in the military. The African-Americans ultimately comprised more than 10% of all troops in the Union Army. The camps surrounding these forts also became the place where they were educated and learned to read and write. Now that a federal commission has been established to recognize 400 years of African-American history, we encourage students, teachers, and the community to recognize the significance of that moment in 1619, and celebrate the resilience and determination of African-Americans who defied the odds and have contributed so much to the building of this nation.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you want to have additional comments?
Would any of our colleagues like to comment on the beautiful words of Ms. Keys-Gamara? Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you. I was transfixed. Thank you very much for bringing this to our Board. I think it's such an important thing to recognize, and that you ended on the positive note, you know, that actually we have much to celebrate and be grateful for, in spite of the hard beginning and the hard times that you spoke about. So, thank you very much for this.
Ms. Palchek.
Yes, I also want to thank Ms. Keys-Gamara. There was so much there, so I hope you will share your words with us, so we can take a little more time to digest it. And perhaps if you know of events that are happening in schools or would like us to share with the community, I know last month we were all to do that for Hispanic Heritage Month, but I appreciate you doing that, and I know you've invited some very special guests from our community. And I agree with Ms. Hines that having a fuller picture, a fuller picture of the history of a very important community to us here in Virginia in these 400 years is very helpful, and I hope that we can continue to incorporate it as we also update our social studies curriculum, so that this is taught not just here at the Board Table, but to our kids throughout our school system. So, thank you so much for bringing that to us today.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I want to echo what Ms. Palchek said. Someone who majored in American history in college and actually took courses in the Civil War, we became aware of where there were the African-American troops that fought bravely to help for the freedom and the success of the Union. But to be able to hear this 400-year history, and then for people to understand that crucial moment, especially at Fort Monroe, what that birthed and the opportunity that our nation began to understand what it means to really recognize and include all of humanity, and that there would be a shared cause to fight alongside one another. This is the type of history that when we often talk about how a 21st-century history can be more inclusive, whether we're talking about how we include more women in history, how we include people of color in our history. It's something that during my time, I didn't get to benefit from that as much, even in my years in college. And so, I just really want to thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara, for bringing this for our Board on such an important anniversary, for us to do this type of recognition. And what I hope it does for Dr. Bray-Bran and for our leadership team is to recognize that this is a way that we can begin to help incorporate the richness of the history here in Virginia, and certainly how it's impacted the nation and the world.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Strauss?
Thank you, and I believe the Department of Education of Virginia is rethinking and rewriting the fourth-grade Virginia history, which is very timely. Certainly, I would look forward to information like this. There's a lot more that needs to be introduced into the fourth-grade curriculum. So, very timely, and I look forward to seeing what the state, the results of the state work, because there is so much work that needs to be done with that fourth-grade piece. So, thank you.
Ms. Evans?
I too want to thank Ms. Keys-Gamara for bringing this to the Board and to the public. It's fairly important for us to hear this detailed history and think about the past and ponder the past, both the good and the bad. So, this is a particularly momentous anniversary, and one that should give us all time to pause and ponder, and think about what this meant for our nation through the last 400 years, and what this means for us today. So, thank you for the great detail and for the commemoration. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz?
So, I was trying to give Dr. Bray-Bran the credit to do this, but I'm going to suggest it as a fellow scholar and lover of political science and history. I think it would be really great if we could put this actually on our website, because the words get lost, then it's like in a YouTube video, and it's sort of lost, but that way, at least maybe, you know, temporarily it could go someplace, just so that it can be consolidated, because there's a lot here that's historically rich, that we could offer out, so that it could be out there for everybody.
Great idea. Mr. McElveen?
Thank you, yes, and thank you to Ms. Keys-Gamara for bringing this forward. I think this is a very poignant time, certainly on the 400th anniversary, to raise this discussion. Of course, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, we continue to face the demons of the past, and our county itself continues to face the demons of the past. Many of you may have heard that tomorrow, McLean High School's newspaper will be publishing an article in which they have gone back to look at the yearbooks from past decades, and they have found some of the very negative and atrocious portrayals of members of our community, blackface, activities like slave auctions that have taken place in our schools. But what is very important about what they have found is that they've seen how those things have happened in the past, and how we, as a county, have worked to overcome them. So, I am grateful to the students who have done this work and continue to look into our history, so that we can all find our better angels.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Ms. Darnett-Covax?
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara, for bringing this up. It's good to follow Mr. McElveen. I think it's very important to look at our history, see what happened, and make sure as we go forward, we work to make sure some of these things never happen, and to make sure the recognition that wasn't given in the past is recognized now. So, as we move forward, I think it's very important to look at this, and I do agree that your words are something that should be put on our website right now for the, talking about the journey. I think that's important. So, thank you for bringing it forward.
And I'll finish by thanking Ms. Keys-Gamara as well. This is a wonderful piece of work. It's a beautiful recognition, and it's one that speaks to me, especially because I represent the Mount Vernon Magisterial District. And in the Mount Vernon Magisterial District, we have Gum Springs, where we just celebrated a major anniversary of the Gum Springs Historical Museum just a couple weeks ago, and had the opportunity to hear from one of the historians with the Park Service who shared much of this story as well. And I want to tip my hat to Ms. Keys-Gamara, because she was the master of ceremonies for that wonderful celebration, and this is a continuation of that great celebration of the important role that African-American history has in the United States, but particularly in the state of Virginia, and where we are relying more heavily on primary sources when we teach history. I appreciate that Ms. Keys-Gamara went back to the primary sources to make sure that we told this history so accurately, and inspire so many of our children in the community to know their history and know the heroic members of the Black community that played such an important role throughout the history of Virginia and the United States. So, thank you very much, Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am grateful to have this celebration, and I look forward to delving deeper. You guys, I left some details out.[1797.11][1797.11](Laughter) And so, I to delving deeper. You guys, I left some details out. And so, as we go forward tonight and talk about naming, I wanted this context to be provided because there is a rich history. And there's also a history of what that meant. And so, I will reserve those comments for later. So, but I do want to talk just a little bit about what, you know, what it meant to be stolen from your home and brought to another country and treated and held as less than human for so many years. And we have to make sure that we tell the whole story. And so, I do appreciate my colleagues recognizing that. And I'm sure we'll have even greater discussion as we talk about naming schools. So, at this time, I would like to invite Pastor Vernon Walton, pastor of the First Baptist Church of Vienna, Shawn Perryman, president of the Fairfax NAACP, representatives from the Bethlehem Baptist Church, which is another historically African-American church. I believe they just celebrated their 157th year, and Mr. Edwin Henderson of the Tenner Hill Heritage Foundation to the dais for a photo with the board. And anybody else who'd like to join us? See if I can get my husband to send the headshot. Sorry, sorry. I was in Fredericksburg for work. I'm sorry. He's not real good with texting.
I now call on Mr. McElveen for a recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, it is my honor tonight to read the recognition of LGBT History Month. The Fairfax County School Board, along with the National PTA, the Fairfax County Council of PTAs, the Fairfax Education Association, recognize October as LGBT, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender History Month. According to the National PTA, negative attitudes towards lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender students puts them at an increased risk for violence and bullying. Negative attitudes also impact a student's ability to learn at school. LGBT History Month is recognized in October nationwide and in FCPS to acknowledge and celebrate that LGBT students, staff, and families are an integral component of our nation and of our Fairfax County Public School System. This special month was first recognized in 1994. October was chosen to commemorate National Coming Out Day on October 14th and the First March on Washington for Gay and Lesbian Rights on October 14th, 1979. One of the first gay-straight alliances in Virginia was founded at Hayfield High School in 2000. And now, students are involved in clubs at many of the high schools in the county, welcoming not only LGBT students, but their friends and those interested in creating safe schools. More than a dozen Fairfax County schools have active gender and sexuality alliances, or gay-straight alliances, through which students are able to network, socialize, and educate their communities about inclusion of the LGBTQ community in our schools. Students do this through forums, posters, announcements, and activities such as Ally Week. The existence of GSAs is an asset to our schools. Educational research indicates that schools which have GSAs have better mental health outcomes for all students. The equity liaisons in our schools also help to make our schools more welcoming for all students and staff. In addition to student clubs, Fairfax County Public Schools boasts an organization for LGBTQ employees, parents, and LGBTQ students and LGBTQ family members. FCPS Pride holds monthly coffee houses and an annual picnic for the community and supports activities such as holiday celebrations and LGBTQ prom. LGBT History Month in October is an opportunity for Fairfax County Public Schools staff and students to celebrate and learn more about these important constituents in our schools and neighborhoods. At this time, I would like to invite those in the audience who are here this evening in support of LGBT Month, including FCPS Pride President Robert Rigby, to join me and my colleagues at the dais for a photo with the board.
Mr. McElveen, I understand that Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Palchek would like to say something before we have the photo at the dais. So, Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. I really wanted to thank you, Mr. McElveen, for reading this important resolution and recognition. Not a lot of people know, but my son, who is now a college sophomore, when he came out to my husband and our family as a junior, that was something that was really important to our family, to realize that a student could be in high school now in the 21st century versus when I was in high school back in the 1980s. It was a much more difficult time for people to feel accepted. And so, now that he's in college and he has said that his mother is allowed to talk and celebrate this, I just wanted to take this moment this evening to say, Dr. Bray Brandon, as a parent, I can't tell you how much it meant to my husband and I that we were lucky enough to raise our children in a community that allowed for him to be himself. And his day was no different, the day that he shared that with us and his friends and close family members. And the fact that he was then able to go on to a university where they have the oldest LGBT center and just a community of acceptance, when I've seen what his experience has been, where he is just him. And that's all it is. He's just him. And we've come a long way in this country, especially in the last 40 years. And so, this is a special recognition for me. And I just really wanted the community to know, we're very fortunate to be here in Fairfax County. I'm so proud to be a citizen here in Fairfax.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Palchek?
Yes, following McLaughlin's words, just sitting here, I was thinking about what Mr. McElveen shared in the last recognition. And first of all, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. It didn't seem that long ago that I was one of those high school students graduated in 2001. But the fact that we've come such a long way, that the first club was not until the year 2000, and that so many of my friends in high school did not feel safe or comfortable to come out until after high school. So, I'm just so grateful that you brought this to us. And especially very grateful for Mr. Rigby because I know these past decades, he has been working with our boards, with our superintendents, with our community to get us to where we are and to help ensure that we come along. There's still a long ways to go, but I want you to know that it's appreciated. We know that all of these kids are your family, and you want to make sure that they're safe and that they are comfortable and able to come to school and learn. So, I just wanted to thank both of you. And I also see that Ms. Williams, the president of FCFT, is also here with us tonight to commemorate this moment. So, just thank you again. And I appreciate the long way we've come and the work ahead of us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek. And with that, do you want to call people to the dais?
Okay. At this time, I would like to invite those here this evening in support of LGBTQ Month to join me at the dais with my colleagues for a photo with the board. Thank you.
I now call on Ms. Strauss for a recognition.
Thank you. It's an honor to recognize this October 21st through 25th, which is designated as the National School Bus Safety Week. Based on the theme "My School Bus: The Safest Form of Student Transportation," the week focuses on student safety when waiting for and boarding a school bus. School bus safety is an issue for all citizens of Fairfax County who need to be aware of laws requiring them to stop and wait behind a school bus when it is loading and unloading student riders. The major responsibility for school bus safety in Fairfax County rests firmly in the hands of our school bus drivers and attendants, who daily transport more than 144,000 students in over 1,625 school buses on more than 6,800 separate roads, traveling over 16.8 million operational miles each year. Motorists are encouraged to practice patience and drive gently near our school buses in our neighborhoods and school communities. At this time, I would like to invite Francine Furby, who is head of our transportation system, Todd Wyatt, Amon Heard, and staff from the Department of Facilities and Transportation to the dais for a photo with the board. And if there are other comments, I guess before we take the picture.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. Schultz has a couple of comments she'd like to make.
I do want to comment on this. And, you know, I live in the western end of the county. I have a district that's larger by almost three times than some of my colleagues. And we have different traffic patterns. They're more densely, have more dense traffic in this area. But we have a lot of two-lane roads out there. And I cannot tell you how many times I've watched a car in front of my eyes blow past a stopped bus. And I see, and this is a very nicely written recognition. It says motorists are encouraged to practice patience and drive gently around school buses. I don't know how much, I think every year at the beginning of school year, we beseech people, you know, we get out of the habit in the summer. I'm just begging. I'm begging people in one of the worst traffic, second worst traffic, whatever it is in the nation. There's nothing that is that important to blow past a stopped bus. I live in fear that one of those days, it's not just going to be somebody who gets somewhere faster, but it's somebody who gets a child killed. And, you know, whether it's a two-lane road, whether it's just traffic and you're not paying attention at those times, I mean, and we have buses that transport children all during the day. So, children could be moving from program to program during the day. We have special education buses transporting children. So, it's not just first thing in the morning and then the end of the afternoon. And it just horrifies me. My heart stops every time I see one of those. And it isn't sometimes. It's a lot. So, it's a problem in Fairfax County. It's like when you see it, you know, talk to your friends about it, talk to your teenage drivers about it. But it's predominantly what I see is it's actually adult drivers who are just in a hurry and their schedule is more important than the lives of children. And we've been lucky. And I want us to stay lucky, but I also want us to stay vigilant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Those are very wise words. I think we all share them with you, that there is nothing more precious than the children that we transport to and from school or those children that walk to and from school. And as the days are getting shorter, it is especially important to be vigilant and keep your eyes out and remember that there's, we can take a pause and breathe rather than rushing past these buses. So, please remember that the most important people in the world are on those buses. So, be cautious.
With that, Ms. Schultz?
So, now it's time for us to have a photograph. Ms. Furby, who is head of transportation, Todd Wyatt, Amon Heard, and staff from the Department of Facilities and Transportation, please join us for a photo.
So I think many of my colleagues would agree with me when I say that during my time on this school board, I have been continually inspired and impressed by our students who aspire to change not only their community, but the world. One of the things that makes Fairfax County Public Schools so unique is that we have what are called student achievement goals, the SAGs, which few districts do. And the third of those goals says explicitly that we aspire to raise students that have, quote, "responsibility to the community and the world." We are so proud of our CIPSY students for taking on this abnormal global challenge, and also to Junior Achievement for providing them with the platform by which to do so. This board, over the past several years, has made incremental steps at bringing our system to be more sustainable. One of the first was removing the polystyrene trays in our cafeterias and replacing them with recyclable cardboard alternatives. And the effort this year to remove the straws and leaving it up to student choice whether to take them or not, just takes us further down the road towards a more sustainable future. We have a lot of work yet to do, and I know Ms. Hines, who seconded this, has been at the forefront of our efforts as a county to establish the Joint Environmental Task Force, which I'm sure she will talk about. But this work is just beginning, and again, I'm so proud to the students who are at the forefront of making our community and our planet more sustainable.
Ms. Hines, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. McElveen, for bringing this forward, and thank you to the students who I assume are with us tonight, right? We're going to get a chance to honor them in person. Great. Great. Thank you for being here and for all that you're doing. As Mr. McElveen said, student initiative is the most powerful force in a school system. That's the truth. From the classroom, to the playing field, to the band room, to the, to the boardroom, to where we are right now. The only force, the student voice, is really the only force that can cut through bureaucracy and politics and pessimism and actually make things happen. This business model that you all came up with is a beacon of hope. I mean, it's just a straw, right? But it's a beacon of hope as we face an increasingly alarming environmental future. And that's why this board and the county board have put together the Joint Environmental Task Force. And the work that that task force is doing is just really a small part, in a way, of what's already happening on the ground. And you all are here today to celebrate what's happening all the time and to show everyone else out there that you can make change. You can. You just take something as simple as a straw, a good idea, and a relentless team, and you can make it happen. And so I would tell anyone out there, any student out there of any age, go for it. And your first step, honestly, could be to reach out to your school board member, because we want your initiative. We want your energy. We want your ideas. We want your positivity. We want to help you do the wonderful things that you're doing. And I know you've come to us before and talked to us about what you're doing, and I know that Mr. McElveen has reached out and talked to you about it as well. So that's the sort of thing, this is the sort of thing that we love to see, and thank you to Junior Achievement for, and Mr. McElveen, for giving us a chance to celebrate you tonight. So congratulations and good luck.
Ms. Palchuk?
Yes. Well, I just want to say thank you. I carry my CIPSY box and straw with me everywhere I can, and it's not just the straw, Ms. Hines, but I can actually carry cutlery in here as well. So I was so impressed by your model, and thank you for the opportunity to allow us to test it. And thank you for leading, and we hope to be able to continue to see your work and to support what you do in our community. So thank you again. We're very proud of you.
So before we asked you to come up for a picture at the dais, I too wanted to say a few words, because ladies and gentlemen, you may remember I first encountered you all when you were at Tyson's Corner in your pop-up shop, and I was just so impressed by each and every one of you. Because for people that don't know about Junior Achievement and what these young people have done, they actually had to develop multiple skills. They had to put together a business plan. They had to identify a product that they thought would fill a niche. They had to develop the advertising and marketing of it, and then they also had to ensure that when they priced it for the public, that it was a successful business model. So those are all the traditional skills that we want entrepreneurs to have. But then they added in the environmental sustainability piece, and I was just so impressed. Your advertisement was, your video was fantastic, and you were very good at marketing, because I left that day with no more cash in my pocket because I bought three straws and quickly gave them to family members. So I am so appreciative of what you're doing. But I also want to say a few words about Junior Achievement, because Junior Achievement just provided a great opportunity for you young people, but they also provide great opportunities for students across Fairfax County to participate in competitions like this, as well as partner with us in Finance Park. And so I'm very proud of that. And then the last piece is that we normally celebrate national champions that are sports teams. So it's really fun to be able to celebrate an entrepreneurial team. So we're glad you're here. Thank you for being here. We do need to vote, so all those in favor of the resolution. And that is unanimous with Mr. Wilson away from the table.
At this time, I'd like to invite some very special people up for a photo. From Junior Achievement, we have Ed Grignier, Chelsea Soniera, and Gail Robinson, hope you can join us up here, as well as our members of the CIPSY team, and I'll take just a second to read all of them. Abby Marie Roblesolis, Rhea Thule, Bryce Metzler, Jay Sharma, Jennifer Young, Michaela Bennett, Vishal Kennigducherla, James Turi, Abigail Adams, Elena Blessing, Linda Wu, and Camille Glathill. Please join us up front for a photo.
Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. Tonight, we have 10 speakers. The first one is Mr. Robert Rigby, followed by John Kaczka and Quelli Zucare.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Bray Brandon, leadership team. My name is Robert Rigby Jr., and I'm in my 21st year teaching for Fairfax County Public Schools. I'm the president of an employees group called FCPS Pride. We are a group for LGBTQ and allied staff, family members of LGBTQ students, and LGBTQ family members. Tonight, you are receiving a presentation on the legislative program. An important part of that legislative program is asking the state legislature to recognize all of the protected glasses that Fairfax County Public Schools recognizes in its nondiscrimination and anti-arrestment policies. As a public school, we recognize heritage and history months for important constituencies in our schools, following the lead of national education organizations. For example, September 15th through October 15th is Hispanic Heritage Month, February is Black History Month, March is Women's History Month, and May is Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. These months give notice that FCPS is a welcoming place for these communities. They give students and staff the opportunity to celebrate their communities. They give teachers an opportunity to focus instruction on important figures and events in the history of these communities. Tonight, for the third year, you recognize LGBT History Month. This shares the message that lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people are welcome in our schools. On behalf of my organization and community, I want to say thank you.
Fairfax County circumvented its contracting guidelines when it hired Marc Poet to write regulations that resulted in co-ed bathrooms and locker rooms. Poet's regulations stated students should use whichever bathroom aligned with their gender preference. Students who called other students the wrong pronoun could be disciplined. Marc Poet was hired without a written contract and without a board vote. Fairfax County Public Schools hid Poet from the public and removed any parental involvement from the drafting of his regulations. Ms. Corbett Sanders, who hired Marc Poet? You're on the board, ma'am. Who hired him? You voted for policy 1450. You're responsible for Marc Poet. Ms. McLaughlin, when was Marc Poet hired? Ms. McLaughlin, we, we want you to represent us, to make sure that you're aware of this going on.
Let's, let's be clear that the former superintendent conferred with him. The board had no involvement in that. I want the facts on the record, okay?
When was Marc Poet hired? Hello? Mr. Foster, you're the attorney for the county. When was he hired? Don't you look at contracts?
You understand the code, please.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Stay in the podium, please.
Ms. Kofax, how was Marc Poet paid and how much was he paid? We don't know? Our tax dollars are being spent? These people are responsible for spending 2.6 billion of our dollars, and they don't know what's going on. Did you vote for policy 1450, Ms. Kofax? Yes or no? You're responsible for Marc Poet. Ms. Corbett Sanders, what was your role in selecting Marc Poet? Hello? You voted for policy 1450. That resulted in Marc Poet. You're responsible. Ms. McLaughlin, what was your role in selecting Marc Poet?
Zero.
Then why was he hired by the county?
I didn't hire him. I didn't have anything.
Point of order, Madam Chair. This is not a back and forth. We don't...
Mr. Kaczka, you're allowed to make comments, but the
Fine.
...board will not be engaging in your comments.
Ms. McLaughlin, you stated on May 7th, 2015, that nothing was going to change when you passed policy 1450. Why did you lie? What should voters do when elected officials lie? The Communist Manifesto states communists want to separate children from their parents so the state can educate them, and also vows to destroy personal property rights. One Fairfax will destroy private property rights. Pass a vague policy like 1450, hire an outside commission to handle the school redistricting, and shut parents out of the process again. What should citizens do for elected officials who are unaccountable, who are irresponsible? Their means is to make sure they're not elected. You are unaccountable, and you should all be removed. Everyone who voted for policy 1450 should be removed from this board. Thank you.
Chairman Corbett Sanders, I'd like a point of privilege to clarify something, because the public needs to know the facts. So it's important for the public to understand that there has been no regulation put in place since the board voted for the policy. There has been no action taken by this board of any kind. There is no lying that has occurred. The former superintendent did consult with an individual, had no involvement with the board whatsoever, and it's very disappointing that anyone would say that this board is lying.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Quelli Zucare, please.
Peace. Good evening to the board and all the community members here today. My name is Quelli Zucare, and I'm a part of a for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. Tonight, we have 10 speakers. The first one is Mr. Robert Rigby, followed by John Kochka and Quelli Zucare.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Bray Brandon, leadership team. My name is Robert Rigby Jr., and I'm in my 21st year teaching for Fairfax County Public Schools. I am the president of an employees group called FCPS Pride. We are a group for LGBTQ and allied staff, family members of LGBTQ students, and LGBTQ family members. Tonight, you are receiving a presentation on the legislative program. An important part of that legislative program is asking the state legislature to recognize all of the protected glasses that Fairfax County Public Schools recognizes in its non-discrimination and anti-arrestment policies. As a public school, we recognize Heritage and History Months for important constituencies in our schools, following the lead of national education organizations. For example, September 15th through October 15th is Hispanic Heritage Month, February is Black History Month, March is Women's History Month, and May is Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. These months give notice that FCPS is a welcoming place for these communities. They give students and staff the opportunity to celebrate their communities. They give teachers an opportunity to focus instruction on important figures and events in the history of these communities. Tonight, for the third year, you recognize LGBT History Month. This shares the message that lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people are welcome in our schools. On behalf of my organization and community, I want to say thank you.
Mr. Kochka?
Fairfax County circumvented its contracting guidelines when it hired Mark Poet to write regulations that resulted in coed bathrooms and locker rooms. Poet's regulations stated students should use whichever bathroom aligned with their gender preference. Students who called other students the wrong pronoun could be disciplined. Mark Poet was hired without a written contract and without a board vote. Fairfax County Public Schools hid Poet from the public and removed any parental involvement from the drafting of his regulations. Ms. Corbett Sanders, who hired Mark Poet? You're on the board, ma'am. Who hired him? You voted for policy 1450. You're responsible for Mark Poet. Ms. McLaughlin, when was Mark Poet hired? Ms. McLaughlin, we want you to represent us, to make sure that you're aware of this going on.
Let's be clear that the former superintendent conferred with him. The board had no involvement in that. I want the facts on the record, okay?
When was Mark Poet hired? Hello, Mr. Foster? You're the attorney for the county. When was he hired? Don't you look at contracts?
You understand the code, please.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ms. Kofax, how was Mark Poet paid, and how much was he paid? We don't know? Our tax dollars are being spent? These people are responsible for spending 2.6 billion of our dollars, and they don't know what's going on. Did you vote for policy 1450, Ms. Kofax? Yes or no? You're responsible for Mark Poet. Ms. Corbett Sanders, what was your role in selecting Mark Poet? Hello? You voted for policy 1450. That resulted in Mark Poet. You're responsible. Ms. McLaughlin, what was your role in selecting Mark Poet? Then why was he hired by the county?
I didn't hire him. I didn't have anything.
Point of order, Madam Chair. This is not a back and forth. We don't...
Mr. Kochka, you're allowed to make comments, but the board will not be engaging in your comments.
Ms. McLaughlin, you stated on May 7th, 2015, that nothing was going to change when you passed policy 1450. Why did you lie? What should voters do when elected officials lie? The Communist Manifesto states communists want to separate children from their parents so the state can educate them, and also vows to destroy personal property rights. One Fairfax will destroy private property rights. Pass a vague policy like 1450, hire an outside commission to handle the school redistricting, and shut parents out of the process again. What should citizens do for elected officials who are unaccountable, who are irresponsible? Their means is to make sure they're not elected. You are unaccountable, and you should all be removed. Everyone who voted for policy 1450 should be removed from this board. Thank you.
Chairman Corbett Sanders, I'd like a point of privilege to clarify something because the public needs to know the facts. So it's important for the public to understand that there has been no regulation put in place since the board voted for the policy. There has been no action taken by this board of any kind. There is no lying that has occurred. The former superintendent did consult with an individual, had no involvement with the board whatsoever, and it's very disappointing that anyone would say that this board is lying.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Quelli Zucare, please.
Peace. Good evening to the board and all the community members here today. My name is Quelli Zucare, and I'm a part of a growing group of educators and parents that are organizing to support equity in FCPS. I'm here today to address the county and school system's annual recognition of Columbus Day. I request that we take immediate steps towards replacing it with Indigenous Peoples' Day or First Nation Peoples' Day, which over 130 municipalities, including Alexandria and Washington, D.C., have already done. Additionally, I request the board take steps to adjust and supplement curriculum framework such that a comprehensive and truthful rendering of the heritage of pre-Columbian indigenous civilizations centered within an indigenous perspective is implemented. Now, I've been a county resident for most of my life, and I'm a product of the justice pyramid, having attended Belvidere, Glasgow, and what was then called Jeb Stuart High School. I'm thankful that this board recently heated calls from the student body and community to change that name to justice, thereby recognizing the importance and power in names of our community institutions. Similarly, holiday celebrations are significant symbols of our community values. Now, while I was in school, I was also appalled each year at the fact that the school system recognized the federally sanctioned Columbus Day. What was presented about his romanticized voyage and the cultures and civilizations of this land was from the perspective of the Europeans and European Americans that intentionally destroyed them and decimated the land as well as plant and animal life. My own daughter has attended an FCPS elementary school since kindergarten, and I've been sorely disappointed to find the curriculum as a whole has made little progress in its depiction of indigenous heritage. As early as kindergarten books used in classrooms present the standard myth that Columbus "discovered" North America and its people, and that he was amicable to them as if he came to make friends. As noted in the pivotal book, "They Came Before Columbus" by the late, great Guyanese scholar Dr. Ivan Van Sertoma, Columbus did no such thing. He violently abused his own crew, enslaved indigenous people, and helped open the gateway for the subsequent destruction of this land and its great nations. His legacy is not one to be proud of nor to be celebrated. Perpetuating his myth is particularly disrespectful to the many FCPS students who are from South and Central America, being that their homelands were also similarly decimated by European conquerors akin to Columbus. Now, I'm currently a PhD student at Howard University studying developmental psychology, and my research focuses on the impact of curricular culture hegemony on K-12 students. Cultural hegemony is the social, political, economic, and ideological domination of one group, in this case, so-called white people, of other groups. Cultural hegemony is systematically embedded into school curriculum throughout this country and maintains a stranglehold on information and thought, thus helping to perpetuate this domination. This has deep implications for learning abilities and outcomes, including hampering development of critical thinking skills. And it's antithetical to the notion of equity or idea that all students deserve a chance to learn.
Mr. Zucare, thank you so much.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you.
Daphne Balotas, followed by George Alber and Melanie Marin.
Good evening, school board and community members. My name is Daphne, and I'm a teacher at Bailey's Elementary School. I'm also an FCPS graduate, having attended Beechtree, Poe, and Justice High School. As an aside, I'm glad to stand in solidarity with the NAACP and other community members here tonight about the name change. I am also here in solidarity with the same group of teachers, parents, and students that Mr. Zucare spoke of just now. As engaged community members who respect and value the many contributions made to our community and to our country through indigenous peoples' knowledge, science, philosophy, and culture, we are calling on members of the school board to support renaming Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day, and take immediate steps towards passing a resolution to recognize this change. Fairfax County would join six states and 130 municipalities around the country that have renamed October 14th as Indigenous Peoples' Day, including Alexandria, Manassas Park, and Washington, D.C. Currently, the Piscatawic Canoe Tribe has called on the highest-ranking elected officials in the DMV to rename Columbus Day, and by calling on your support for this change, we stand in solidarity with the leadership of indigenous people on this issue. It is important that we recognize that our county rests on the land of the Manahowic people, an important part of local history and culture that is largely overlooked. With the growing number of indigenous people from Central and South America expanding in our communities, we must take leadership in acknowledging the many contributions of indigenous people. We are calling on the Fairfax County School Board to commit to policies and practices that reflect the needs and experiences of indigenous peoples and honor this country's indigenous roots and contributions. The history of the indigenous people of this country is taught in Virginia schools only in relation to European colonization and from a perspective rooted in white supremacy. We call on FCPS to commit to provide resources to teachers so that they can begin to unpack their biases and provide students with a curriculum that presents a truthful narrative centering indigenous knowledge and perspectives. Renaming Indigenous Peoples' Day is one step towards beginning to recognize and acknowledge the history of the systemic oppression of indigenous people on the land that we now call Fairfax County. I would also like to thank school board member Evans for already agreeing to meet with us to discuss this issue further. We call upon all other members of the board to join us and work together in this change. Thank you for your time.
George Alber, followed by Melanie Marin.
Good evening. I would like to yield my time to Luna Alizar, who's a student at Robert E. Lee High School.
Hello. My name is Luna Alizar, and I'm a student at Lee High School. I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify today. I believe that changing the renaming policy will help reach the goal of changing the name of Robert E. Lee High School. Some insight about me is that I am the secretary of the student government and the president of the NAACP club at Lee High School. I believe it is my obligation to represent the school and the members of the NAACP club to the best of my abilities. That being said, I would like if you imagined being a Lee High School student. We are a tremendously diverse community with strong ambitions and remarkable unity. We are charismatic and full of pride. We have different ideas and imaginations that makes us truly unique. However, we are named after someone who doesn't represent us at all. Every day, I walk into that school, being the strong African-American woman I am, and my face is filled with disgust as I look at the portrait of the Confederate General Robert E. Lee. The name of our school brings dishonor to who we are. Robert E. Lee was part of a government that allowed slavery. One day, a woman asked me what school I go to, and I said, "Robert E. Lee High School." She looked at me with distraught and went on to say, "You mean the Confederate General Robert E. Lee?" I was ashamed to say yes. I had to explain we're more than that. Being named after Robert E. Lee already welcomes a negative connotation. Our diversity should be depicted through our name. It should reflect who we are. Being a minority-majority school, we should be named after a minority leader like Hugo Chavez or Nelson Mandela. Imagine the dreams and possibilities that the students at Lee could feel if they knew how diversity was not only portrayed by the students and clubs at Lee, but by the name of the school they go to. They say, "Don't judge a book by its cover," but if people don't like the feeling they get from the title, are they still going to read? What I mean by this is that my school is beautiful in marvelous ways. Our diversity strengthens our community. Our shield of diligence keeps us comforted. The name of our school neglects all those aspects. The name Robert E. Lee High School always makes people think twice about my school. I believe in perseverance, and that we can accomplish the hard task of changing the school's name. I believe that the Lancer community can build from this with hard work and determination. Change is awaiting, and we are getting one step closer. Thank you.
Melanie Marin, followed by Debbie Ratliff.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'll be speaking to the resource stewardship item, the LGBT History Month item, and the school renaming item. So first, regarding the research stewardship item. So thank you for your time, and time is actually the focus of what I'd like to share, which comes from my experience being a co-chair on your Human Resources Advisory Committee along with Abra Omeche. And you had received in the summer our suggestions on how to go about further looking into issues like teacher retention, to keep our wonderful teachers. And I really, what I learned from the experience this last year is that we focus a lot on the dollars as our resource, but we also know that time is our other limited resource. And it was a wonderful high school teacher on the committee who pointed out that teachers are asked to do all these responsibilities and assignments, and yet there's no accounting of time to say, "This is how long this task is going to take, you know, for instruction, for planning, for duties, for responding to parents, for following through on individualized education plan commitments or requirements." So this recommendation that we sent to you does very much ask that we think about how to account for time, because our teachers are overwhelmed. And just, you know, I've seen friends the last few weeks who have left after years of service because they are just burnt out. So I hope that you will read those recommendations as the HRAC continues on for this year. And I also want to echo my support for LGBT History Month. And relatedly, I'm really amazed by all the comments tonight, speaking to equity and expressing the diversity of our community. I have been advocating for years to better represent African-American history in the curriculum. Ms. Karen Kiesgmar has been very receptive to that, and thank you for your advocacy there. But my daughter is now in fourth grade, and I'm going to see firsthand what's going on. Unfortunately, my principal has been very receptive to expanding rightly the curriculum and opportunities. And I hear that Dr. Tyson's, our regional assistant superintendent, is taking the administrators in Region 1 to the African-American History Museum as professional development. And I hope that all administrators and as many teachers as possible, whether it's social studies or gen ed, can go there, because it is a transformative experience, and we have it 14 miles away. So I hope that while we keep these months to recognize these distinct groups, that they just become part of our fabric of curriculum. This is American history. This is the American experience. This is our children's experience. So thank you for considering those thoughts, and have a good night.
Thank you. Debbie Ratliff, followed by Brian Scrafford.
Hello. My testimony tonight's in support of revisions to the school board policy and regulation 8170 to provide that the school board can rename a school to ensure an inclusive, respectful learning environment as outlined in our adopted One Fairfax policy, or when the board deems it appropriate. The One Fairfax policy champions each individual, not a homogeneous community of automatons, all thinking alike and looking alike. With full support of the school board and the Board of Supervisors, One Fairfax sets a very high bar for all of us to be champions of the individual, that we are one community in which all are welcome and all are respected. All belong, and all can flourish. An equitable community that does not discriminate based on your background, the language you speak, who you love, or who you vote for. Equity, inclusion, diversity, acceptance, nonjudgment, learning free from fear and intimidation. One Fairfax. Learning free from institutional racism that, as I pointed out in testimony before the school board last year, we are meeting in an example of tonight. The Luther P. Jackson High School opened as an all Negro school back in 1954, the very year that the Supreme Court of the United States reached their landmark decision in Brown v. Board, ruling that racial segregation in public schools is unconstitutional. An all Negro school in the language of the 1950s. Before 1954, if you were black and lived in Fairfax County, your education ended at the eighth grade. If you lived in this community in the 1950s, you were not living in a community of equity, inclusion, acceptance, nonjudgment. Children did not live free from fear and intimidation in Fairfax County in the 1950s. We've come a long way since then. Today, we prioritize equity, and we see all children. However, some of the decisions of the 1950s, naming schools to honor men who waged war to protect a man's right to own slaves, remain in our community, and they don't have a place here. I support changes to the policy and regulation 8170 so the school board can rename a school to ensure an inclusive, respectful learning environment as outlined in our adopted One Fairfax policy, or when the board deems it appropriate. I'm very proud to share the news that the high school my younger child attends, Justice High School, has been selected to receive the Superintendent's Excellence in Equity Award at the October 24th school board meeting. The award recognizes schools which have made significant gains in closing student achievement gaps, as well as increasing overall SOL pass rates for students in math and reading during the last school year. This award recognizes the value of equity, as we do. Our school naming policy must promote, as we do, and as a One Fairfax policy does, a learning community of equity, of inclusion, acceptance, and nonjudgment. A community in which children live free from fear and the intimidation of institutional racism. We are one community in which all are welcome and all are respected. An equitable community that does not discriminate based on your background, the language you speak, who you love, or who you vote for. All can belong, and all can flourish. It's time to change. Thank you.
Brian Scrafford, followed by Sean Perryman and Casey Utley.
Good evening. My name is Brian Scrafford, and I'm a resident of the Sully District. I grew up in Fairfax County. I'm the son of a retired school teacher, and went on to graduate from Central High School and receive a degree in American history from George Mason. My passion for history didn't end when I received my degree, as I'm currently a member of a nonprofit organization that promotes discussion of the Civil War and preserving historic sites. With that in mind, I am extremely disappointed that we have some people arguing that we must continue to honor white supremacists by naming schools after them, all in the name of supposedly preserving history. As someone who has a history degree, I can tell you that the practice of glorifying Confederate generals started in the Jim Crow era as a way to intimidate former slaves and isn't truly a way to celebrate Virginia's history. Naming schools after Confederates is simply a continuation of that practice. If you're looking for some data to back this up, consider this. There are 429 war memorials in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And four of them are for the Revolutionary War, a war we played a pretty big role in. There are seven for World War II, six for World War I, 27 for the Union cause, but there are 378 for the Confederacy. That means 88% of our war memorials in Virginia are glorifying Confederates and others who fought to preserve the institution of slavery. It's unfortunate that we've allowed this to spread into naming our school system. Now, there's been some discussion that it might be too expensive to make the changes. However, we must consider that businesses are more and more socially conscious now and are looking to invest in communities that are welcoming. Changing these school names will accomplish that goal and welcome more business investment. Should be remembered that Germans don't need to name their schools after Adolf Hitler in order to remember the lessons they learned during World War II. We don't need to name our schools after Confederate generals to remember the horrible lessons of the Civil War and our history of slavery. I thank you for your time and encourage you to support the proposal that would allow us to change names of schools that celebrate white supremacy and traitors of the United States. Thank you.
Sean Perryman, followed by Casey Utley.
Hi. My name is Sean Perryman. I'm the president of the Fairfax County NAACP. Tonight, we recognize that the first Africans, enslaved Africans, were brought to the shores of America in 1619. Remarkably, 400 years after their arrival, despite the blood spilled and the obvious inhumanity of chattel slavery, our textbooks still talk about this as if it were some employment agreement gone wrong, instead of the dishumanization of an entire race of people that has ripple effects to this very day. You can trace chattel slavery and what went down in 1619 to mass incarceration and all the ills that we see today. I think it's the sort of willful manipulation of history that allows for the naming of a school like Robert E. Lee High School. Two years ago, I came here, and I pled for you to stand up on your values and change the name of Jeb Stuart. Some of you did that. I spoke about how the Confederacy was built on the cornerstone of white supremacy and was rooted in the continuation of slavery. At that time, I thought I was coming to educate and advocate, but I'm tired of talking about the moral case. I don't need to educate adults living in this society that the Civil War was about slavery, that the Confederacy was built on the fiction of white supremacy, that these schools and monuments are rallying points for racists and white supremacists. I don't need to teach you that, because Charlottesville is not that far away. Heather Hire and her death is not that long ago. You already know this. You know what these schools are about. You know why these things were named. So I'll get to the point. Your policy needs to start from the point that your forum topic did. Your policy needs to start from the point that your forum topic did, that these monuments and the Confederacy and their values no longer align with this community. If you start from there, if you start from that truth, and it is a truth, if you start there, you'll end up in the right place. And no, not to something like R. Lee or Lee High School or something else that makes a mockery of the whole process, an actual, real name change that acknowledges the wrong that was done all those years ago and the legacy of that naming, and unequivocally rejects it wholeheartedly. The process shouldn't give space to hate speech at these meetings. It should put the burden of leadership where it belongs, with you. You are elected officials of this community. If we put integration, civil rights, gay marriage to a community vote, our society would not look the way it does today. Otherwise, these ceremonies, the 1619, the One Fairfax, the equity, they don't mean anything because it's just fluff when you have Robert E. Lee standing in the middle of your county. So finally, I realize that public service is often a thankless job, criticism is abundant, and recognition short. So I just want to thank you, Tamara Kofax, for introducing the forum topic and urge you all to change the name. Thank you.
Casey Utley.
My name is Casey Utley, and I'm speaking for showing up for racial justice Northern Virginia. As the Board already acknowledged this evening, this year marks the 400th anniversary of enslaved Black peoples' arrival here in the colony of Virginia. Yet here as we stand, four centuries later, we're still debating whether or not white colonizers, white supremacists, white slaveholders, and white segregationists deserve a venerated position in our schools of all places. What was true 400 years ago remains true today. The humanity of Black people is not up for debate. Black lives matter. And because Black lives matter, symbols of white supremacy are indelibly harmful, even violent. School names, mascots, holidays, school curricula, all have potential to construct meaning around our history. By calling for this shift, we aren't here to erase history, we're here to make history by changing the way that we frame our collective experiences around race and colonization. The last time the Board revisited this subject during the fight to create Justice High School, you all worked too slowly, often hamstrung by efforts to placate those who want to whitewash the legacy of anti-Blackness in our country. Time and again, you allowed these harmful forces to have a platform and equal part in your deliberations, forcing Black and Brown leaders, including students, to bear the weight of their violent diatribes. We were all told to endure this with civility, to listen to the celebration of oppression as if it were reasonable or dispassionate. You have a responsibility to the young people in communities you serve to fight white supremacy and create a safe learning environment that teach with integrity and affirm the dignity of your students, especially those who've been historically, even currently marginalized by Board policies and actions. We ask that you stand firmly against racism and move swiftly to correct and make reparation for the injustices committed to advance and protect white supremacy. Specifically, we're echoing the calls tonight to change Lee High School to recognize and teach about Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day. Thank you.
Thank you to all those who came to speak tonight. I now call on Ms. Boateng for Student Representative Matters.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to first and foremost thank everyone who came out to speak today. Not to sound like a broken record, but every single time that somebody comes up to the podium to speak, it's truly fulfilling regardless of what they're talking about because they're making a stand in their community and what they believe in. And regardless of what they're talking about, that's truly powerful and it's something that should always be commended. And so, just a few things, well, I wouldn't say a few, I guess. So since the last time I was here, I just want to say, you guys, I've talked about the Fairfax County Board of Student Representatives, and I'm happy to say a lot of our student representatives that I've nominated have attended their first meeting. The student representative to the Advanced Academics Committee attended her first meeting on Tuesday, I believe, and I actually attended the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee last night. So I don't want to say too much because I'm not the person to display the information to the School Board, but I noticed that a lot of the stuff that they talked about were things that I've already wanted to speak about. So some of the stuff that throughout my, I guess, not campaign, but my platform echoed a lot around the SRNR and specifically the language of it. Over the summer, Ms. Corbett Sanders sent me a document. It was about 60 pages. It was one of the best readings I've ever had. Super, it was super, actually, I actually did enjoy it. So, and I was, I'm thankful to say that I was able to provide certain notes that I felt could use some improvement. And of course, I've already seen some improvement with things that I want to see, like restorative justice. And I guess the language that I want, that I talk, I want to talk about is kind of discretionary for administration because I feel as if, and they've also talked about this last night, there is a lot of things that is up to the discretion of administrators and could be like a lot of he says, she says, and that could end up with a lot of discrepancies of what is allowed and what can be done in a situation and what should and should not be done. I feel as if certain things aren't, like get a little muddled. So that's some of the things that I want to also talk about this year. And we also talked about the disproportionate rate of infractions for Latinx and Black students. So what I mean by infractions, I mean, and I don't mean large disciplinary actions, I mean like things like disruptive classroom behavior because that's often, that's not big enough of an issue to take it to principal or to like the superintendent, but is the big enough of an issue to have a section in the SRNR book to say, this is what can be done, like temporary classroom privileges laws, temporary privileges laws, all that stuff. And we've seen that a lot of things, the disproportionate rate of infractions faced by Latinx and Black students, we try to look for the reason behind that. And personally, I see it through, and I talked to Ms. Corbett Sanders about this too, the idea of implicit bias. So I'm kind of forgetting whether or not I've talked about this on the Board or not. So just to reiterate, just in case I haven't, implicit bias is something that we all have is based on whatever we had as, like, as a society, a society, whatever media and whatever around us has formed, whatever opinions that we are not explicitly aware of. So it's different from explicit bias because explicit bias is something that we are aware of and we actively work on. Implicit is something that we all have regardless of whatever bias or whatever background that we believe to have. So what's important about that is that I feel often teachers, like workforce, is not exactly reflective of the students that go to our schools. And I say this coming, just to put a little background, I also do attend Robert E. Lee High School. I'm a junior there. And as a lot of many people said, it is a majority-minority school. And I feel as if growing up in that pyramid, a majority of my, I think almost every single teacher that's on my schedule is Caucasian, but that doesn't reflect the diverse community that is Lee High School. So I'm addressing this, but also that's kind of above my pay grade, but I thought it was helpful. Yeah, I thought it'd be like fulfilling to share. And also things about cultural responsiveness. While reading through a bunch of documents about equity, that was a term that showed up a lot, about cultural responsiveness on what is the culture at that school, what is the culture of the students that attend there, and how do, does the workforce and the staff properly react to that? And I feel as if personally there are wrong ways to react to things. And I, like, that's something I want to also address throughout the year. And also something that wasn't exactly brought up there, but it kind of tied in, the discipline of young students. And what I mean by young students, I mean elementary school age students. And like the question of, are we setting up the children for success or are we condemning them to a cycle of behavioral issues? And why I ask that is because it kind of ties in with discipline reform a lot because are we providing punishments to students to, as an opportunity to learn for them or just as a short end, this is the issue, we're just going to give you this? Because what ends up happening is, like I said, I've said this multiple times, I believe that things become like self-fulfilling prophecies. And if a child starts to believe that they are something based on what's been shown to them, they will end up becoming that. So that's what I mean by condemning them to a cycle of behavioral issues. Because instead of teaching a child and reforming them in the way that they should go, it's kind of as if you are this bad child, I need, you guys, you need punishment, and that's just all that's going to happen. I don't feel as if that's helpful in the slightest, and I've said that multiple times. And with that, I also am going to like tie into certain topics that I want, I'm going to talk about later on, and also, once again, implicit bias. So I talked about how, what it is, and it's common for everyone. Everybody has it, and I like to reiterate that all the time. It's not a certain group of people that have it. Every single one of us has implicit bias. But just because it's common and all of us have it does not mean that it is okay. So for like a personal thing to kind of tie into what that means is, growing up, I've often had certain, I'm not going to call it compliments because they weren't compliments. It was kind of like oftentimes there'd be teachers who would meet me in the beginning of the year, and then at the end of the year, they told me, I didn't realize that you were going to be such a good kid. I didn't realize you were going to be so articulate. As a kid, I didn't realize how of a backhanded compliment that was. Because why did they think, why did they think otherwise? Why did I have to go through, using that, certain energies to unravel and art, like unravel the ideas that they had of me while I could have been using that same energy on the curriculum that I was supposed to be studying? Like while, instead of trying to foster relationships with teachers, with like the students that they teach, they already have whatever idea of the student that they have. And that's incredibly harmful, it's incredibly stressful, and students do not need to go through that. So that's something what I want to talk about throughout this year and see what we can do because I want to bring awareness to it because you can't do anything if people aren't aware of it. So I know there's not, like, a lot of things, it's a very hard and a very large issue. So I want to, I want to take baby steps, but I understand it's realistic to take baby steps. And, so yeah. So I'm going to also, this one's less, it's not about implicit bias. So I also wanted to bring up an idea about town hall and student councils at every single school. So my freshman year, I attended South County High School, and what they had was, once a month, they had a meeting with one student, like representative, from each homeroom that met up in like the cafeteria and talked about certain issues that the student body faced. And what was, I felt that was helpful about this is that the administrators were present, so it wasn't as if they were just talking into the air. It was something like, this is an issue, the administrator's there to hear it, and then at the next meeting, they would talk about what they're doing or what they did to fix that issue. And it was kind of like a direct way to do things. Because not every single student is out as loud or as outgoing as I am. And I understand that, but every single student should have as equal amount of access to talk about issues at their school as I do. So by giving this student a direct outlet to like, this student's in my class, I'll talk to them, they'll talk to the council, that's a direct pathway. And some students are also not as close with their administrators or their counselors, even though I wish they were, but I know, understand it's not realistic to believe that every student is. So by having this direct path, I believe that a lot more things will be heard and a lot more students will feel more open to talk about issues at their school. And I also wanted to talk about the update of the calculus thing because a lot of people have reached out to me about it since the last meeting, so I just also want to thank people, everyone, for their concern. And I also wanted to highlight the reason why I brought it up. So the reason why I brought it up was not exactly to fix the situation, but I also wanted to bring light that I am most definitely not the only student that has gone through this issue. Why I ended up having to fight with my administration, I had to jump through hoops to take that class. And I want to bring light to it because it's something that a lot of students in like the smaller schools, the schools that have less people in it, face because there's such a small pool of students that take higher level classes. It's like we have to kind of fight each other to fit into those classes. And it kind of, I feel as if it staggers us. Like, we're already trying to, I don't want to say we're at a disadvantage, but we're already trying hard to get through this, and then there's another obstacle. And that's, I feel is not fair to not just me, but to like every student that has gone through this. So kind of to wrap up, I, throughout this, I guess, tenor, I've had a bunch of students that reached out to me, like about random things, and I just want to say, I love that a lot. And I'm actually meeting with the Justice Leadership SGA next Friday, which is going to be like, I'm visiting different leaderships, and it's going to be my first one. I'm really excited about that. And I also want to have more opportunities to talk to the youth in the county. And then it doesn't even have to be in like a formal meeting, just like, oh yeah, let's meet up here, I'm actually going to Hayfield Homecoming Parade tomorrow. So all these, like, these things, I encourage whatever students, whatever they want to talk about, to reach out to me because those type of things, I want to hear what they say, they're saying. I want to have groups talk about what's going on here and how do you think we can fix it? So I encourage a bunch of students, whatever the issue may be, I always want to hear it. Even if it's something like, hi, I just want to introduce myself. Please do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boateng. I now call on Dr. Braybrand for the introduction of the Goal Four Resource Stewardship Report.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. I am excited to have our Assistant Superintendent for Financial Services, Lee Burden, come up and talk about the Goal Four report. I'd like to share with the Board and the community, one of the things that we're doing this year, you know, the four goals drive our strategic plan, student success, caring culture, premier workforce, and resource stewardship. These four goals are the linchpin of our strategic plan at night. And we've worked with the Board this year for the goal reports to happen in the fall so that you will get results from the school system to inform your budget process, which starts in January. And we're delighted to have Ms. Burden here to start us off with, we're actually going to start with the fourth goal first, and that is around resource stewardship, and I'll let Ms. Burden take it away. I do want to remind the Board that we will have a full work session. I know you have a full agenda tonight. We have a full work session around this goal report, and we look forward to having a great discussion on Monday about it.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Braybrand. I'm before you tonight to report on Goal Four Resource Stewardship. But remember, as Dr. Braybrand said, there will be a more detailed discussion at the October 28 School Board Work Session and approval at the November 7 regular School Board Meeting. As outlined in Strategic Plan Goal Four, resource stewardship basically means fiscal budgeting and allocation to maximize FCPS's effectiveness and efficiency. It's important to mention that this report looks back at Fiscal '19 and progress towards metrics during that time period. So I'll start with the terms overview. The majority of the metrics use a three-year baseline, use three-year baseline data to develop the targets. And for resource stewardship metrics, this is an average performance from Fiscal '16 to Fiscal '18. The data represented in this report was collected during Fiscal '19. The targets are what the division should achieve by 2020, and aspirations are what the division wants to achieve in the strategic plan. This is the first time that the Resource Stewardship Goal Report will present data related to aspirations that the School Board approved in March of 2019. So again, it's just the efficient budgeting and allocation. And the resource stewardship aspirations include maintaining a cost per pupil plus or minus $1,000 of the average cost per pupil of the Washington area Boards of Education, commonly called WABE average. We met that target. The second one, ensuring that funds will be allocated using the strategic decision-making cycle. We progressed towards that target. Ensuring that schools will have adequate student classroom space, eliminating trailers. We made progress towards that target as well. And finally- And finally, that FCPS will maintain schools that all students, family, and staff consider safe, and we also made progress towards that. Regarding the first aspiration, FCPS will maintain a cost per pupil of plus or minus $1,000 of the average cost per pupil of the Washington Area Boards of Education. We met our targeted level of performance with a cost per pupil of $15,293, which is slightly above the average of the other school divisions included in the WABE guide of $15,103. The cost per pupil increase is primarily attributable to the implementation of the plan to increase teacher salaries. Cost per pupil calculations provide an overall view of the cost of all programs and can be used to compare how school systems spend their funds. The CPP is a metric that is routinely used to compare costs, but one must ensure that the CPP is calculated in exactly the same way. And toward that end, a division-wide cost per pupil is computed annually using a methodology agreed upon by the WABE Participants Coalition or the, the WABE Group. Regarding the second aspiration, all spending will be allocated using the strategic decision-making cycle. We made progress towards aligning the budget using the strategic decision-making cycle. You may recall the beginning with the Fiscal '20 proposed budget, the budget aligned funds to the four goal areas of the strategic plan, student success, caring culture, premier workforce, and resource stewardship. And this also marked the first time that we aligned the budget increases to the goal areas to show how budget adjustments supported each goal area. The actions taken to progress towards this goal were that the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement, or ORC, and Financial Services worked together to align the budget to the four strategic goal areas. We revised the reporting structure to incorporate the SDMC, or Strategic Decision-Making Cycle Framework. ORC developed a new work structure that links strategic efforts with resource allocation, and we revised the school improvement and innovation plan template to align to the strategic plan as well. The next steps are to align the funding to the eight prioritized area to meet the 2020 target, and we are on track to do that. The third aspiration is all schools will have adequate classroom space for students, eliminating the need for trailers. We made progress towards this goal by reducing the number of temporary classrooms by a net of 69 or 9% during Fiscal '19. Most of the removals, 60 temporary classrooms, is attributed to school renovation. An additional 32 removed due to consultation with schools for better use of space and to remove aging and deteriorating trailers. This, this reduction was offset by the addition of 23 temporary classrooms through the annual facilities review. Actions taken to provide adequate classroom space is through renovation. Removal of temporary classroom occurs as renovations of existing school facilities are progressing. We conduct capacity and facility reviews for the upcoming school year based on the projected program and membership changes. We provide consultations to principals and schools for efficient and appropriate use of space. And we, of course, facilities and transportation services continually monitors the condition of the temporary classrooms. So currently, the removal of temporary classrooms primarily comes through working with principals to ensure efficient use of space and through renovations. Although note that for school, that waiting for schools to be renovated is costly and will take a significant amount of time. So we believe that the current actions taken to reduce temporary classrooms do not place the division on a trajectory that will allow us to reach the target without accelerating trailer removal or reducing the need for additional temporary classroom space. So next steps are plans to examine our approach to reducing the temporary classrooms and determine what else is needed to accelerate that progress. The fourth aspiration under resource stewardship is FCPS will maintain schools that all students, families, and staff consider safe. We made progress on this aspiration in Fiscal '19. Students and staff reported perceptions of safety at FCPS schools that were higher than at baseline, moving the division closer to its 1820 target levels. Student perceptions improved four points, while staff perceptions improved three points for an average of three and a half points combined. Family perceptions of safety were collected for the first time and showed even higher perceived levels of school safety than that reported by students and staff. And this data comes from the State Climate Survey for students and staff and the Family Engagement Survey for families. The actions taken for this aspiration include safety and security training, we added eight additional technical positions approved by the school board to add additional safety and tabletop training exercises at schools. A threat assessment working group was formed to discuss processes for improvement. We also replaced classroom locks by purchasing 1,900 locks so that classrooms could be locked without a key. We enhanced mental health support by providing additional school psychology and school social workers in 19 middle schools. So that a total of $4.2 million to improve school safety and security was spent. 1.1 million for the eight technical staff and new training sessions, about a half a million towards replacing locks, and 2.6 million funding the nine psychologists and nine social workers to provide mental health supports at 19 middle schools. So, FCPS is on track to meet its 2020 target. Progress with students and then progress on staff perceptions of safety while improving will need some work for us to meet our intended 2020 target levels. So enhanced understanding of what factors lead to higher perceptions of school safety among staff is likely to be needed. And of course, there are future budget considerations in meeting our targets. This work may require greater resources regarding the strategic decision-making cycle. Additional staff positions may be needed to strengthen processes and structures for analysis. Dedicated funds for strategic efforts identified by the strategic decision-making cycle are going, will be necessary for flexibility. Adequate classroom space will require additional facilities and transportation services staff to support capacity and facility reviews, and expediting renovations would require increased bond funding. And for safety, funding for mental health professionals will need to be continued and perhaps expanded. Funding for additional staff in the Office of Safety and Security may be needed for oversight of school-based safety and security positions. There are other future considerations like strategic concerns, the, as far as the cost per pupil goes, I mean, we're very, we're not even close to the plus or minus $1,000, but we may need to repurpose current funds to support strategic priorities in the future to keep the cost per pupil within the target range. As far as strategic decision-making goes, we will need a more flexible approach to budgeting to implement that, that plan. Budget documents will need refining to show the alignment of funds to the strategic initiatives. Adequate classroom space, we'll need to find innovative ways to balance the need for additional space against the desire to reduce temporary classrooms. And then as far as safety goes, we'll need to understand the sources of safety concerns for students, parents, and staff. And remember, there will be a more detailed discussion about Goal Four on October the 28th at the School Board Work Session.
Thank you, Ms. Burden, we really appreciate that. I do not have any lights on, so with that, we can go on to the next.
Thank you very much.
Agenda. Thank you, see you on Monday. I apologize. The Goal Four report will be discussed at the October 28th Work Session, and the action is scheduled for November 7th. I call on Dr. Brabran for the introduction of the state and federal legislative program.
Yes, it's time for the Fairfax County School Board State and Federal Legislative Program. We're coming to you a little bit earlier this year, based on your feedback, we've talked about partnership between the administration and school board. And one of the things we heard really clearly from you is bring this legislative program to us earlier, before the General Assembly gets seated, before things really start going on down in Richmond, so that you have time to get feedback, to give us feedback, to get feedback from the community. And it's my delight and pleasure to bring you the Honorable Michael Malloy, who just does an awesome job as Director, to give you an update on the proposed legislative program. We look forward to your feedback. At the Work Session actually is on Monday, so really a short turnaround, but that allow you to really look at what you see tonight, give us feedback on Monday, and we can turn that back around so that you all can present to the General Assembly and our federal policymakers what your legislative program is for this coming year. So, Mr. Malloy?
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. Madam Chair, members of the committee, Dr. Brabran. I'm very pleased to present to you tonight what amounts to a preview of coming attractions. As Dr. Brabran mentioned, you all have a work session set for Monday to discuss your 2020 version of the state and federal legislative program. So wanted to bring you some information tonight, to kind of give you a little bit of information about what the program is, you know, kind of what the intention of the program is, what your environment looks like in terms of the, kind of the political and policy environment, and then talk a little bit about the major proposed changes. I do not, in fairness, I do not plan to go through every single word that might have changed in the program. That's actually attached as part of a, the Work Session Agenda Item, which has already been posted for Monday. So you have a full strike-through version, so you have the, the 2019 version of the program, underlines where everything has been added, strike-through where everything has been proposed for deletions. And then you also should have a comprehensive table included with that that goes through every change, even if it's a minor, this kind of wording change, we try to identify everything that's proposed for change. So if you remember, your, your school board legislative program is really your position statements and your priorities based on policy issues that we kind of project may come up or things that we think may happen during the next year. That could be legislative, and I want to make it clear that even though we call this the legislative program, a lot of what this document talks about are things that are not necessarily legislative. They might be executive actions, they might be regulations, but they all still kind of have that same common policy advocacy piece to them. In terms of what we do on the staff side for the annual update is, we go through, and every department has a chance to look through the program, provide feedback, let us know, is there anything that, that needs to be added, any issues that have come up in the previous year? We look at what happened over the previous year in terms of legislation that might have passed or issues that, that have arisen. So we try to make both additions and subtractions to the program as, as it goes forward. And then you all, there's a separate piece of it, which is, you all take that program and you decide what your priorities are among the larger programs. So you identify half a dozen to a dozen particular items that you want to add, have as your priorities. One other thing just to remind you of is that much of the program carries over from year to year. I can actually, if you go back, I can trace all the way to the 1970s a few of the positions that are in the legislative program. Now, I don't mean to sound that we're not successful in what we do, but really, that reflects the fact that there are issues that are perennial. Funding issues, there are always going to be funding issues, and you can probably go back to the beginning of the Fairfax County Public Schools and find legislative positions on funding from the state. So, you know, I, I can trace back to the 70s, but I'm sure it goes much, much further back than that. All right, so to set the stage, as you are all very painfully aware, I'm sure, it is an election year. Does it only affect you all? It affects, and this is one of the every-four-year election cycles, so you have both the House and the Virginia Senate that are up for election, so that's all 140 members. At exactly the same time that that's happening, you have the governor who is putting together his biennial budget. You remember that the state runs on a, on a two-year budget cycle, so this is really the first time that this governor has had the opportunity to put his own signature on a full two-year budget. As part of that budget process, the state updates a lot of its data, a lot of its funding formulas. I'm sure you've, you've seen information about re-benchmarking and, and the process that the state goes through to update its data, update the amount of money that it's proposing to send back to localities. And finally, the State Board of Education, every two years, goes through a process of making recommendations for changes to its own standards of quality. So we'll have all of that coming up at exactly the same time. All right, so first, wanted to just highlight a few places where we're proposing to remove positions or existing pieces from the legislative program, and they're all based on essentially successful legislative action or successful regulatory action. Proposed to remove part of the revenue alternative program, piece, which really spoke to the collection of internet sales tax, that issue has been addressed at the state level. School calendar, as you are aware, the, the state has changed how we operate with, with the school calendar. Labor Day is, the, the process still is not completely and entirely in your hands, so that's why the entire position is not being deleted altogether. But an entire section is being deleted, having to deal with weather-related waivers and other types of procedures that were in the Labor Day law prior to this past year. A couple of changes in the standard of accreditation and standard of learning position, based on changes the state has made in their accreditation system. And also some better alignment that they've come up with between what localities are doing, what the state is doing, and what federal requirements look like. And then finally, deleting reference in the program to legislation dealing with school bus stop arm cameras. Again, this is only part of that position that's coming out, the emphasis on still needing to emphasize and, and patrol stop school buses, as we heard earlier in, in the meeting today, is certainly, it continues to be an issue, so that the general advocacy remains, but the specific references to the stop-arm camera, it's being proposed for deletion. All right, so now on to the additions. Under the attendance intruency, okay, let me stop for a second. You'll notice that there are letters in front of every one of these positions. If you remember, a couple of years ago, the board decided to kind of come up with a lettering and numbering system for every one of its positions. So when you look at the document that all of these positions are drawn from, the letters that you see are just references to the, the position, letter in the legislative program. So under attendance intruency, a couple of new issues are being proposed for addition. One deals with changing how attendance intruency regulations apply to students who are over the age of 18, so over the age of compulsory attendance. And then another piece of the, the attendance intruency position that's proposed for change is to try and come up with an alternative attendance indicator that doesn't simply rely on student presence, it can rely on something along the lines of student engagement. So as an example, a student is absent for a day, so they're physically not present in a classroom, but they've checked all of their assignments on blackboard, they've contacted their teacher, they've kept up with the work, so they're not returning to the classroom any further behind than they would have been had they been in the classroom. The idea is, is to come up with a way to measure that, particularly given the importance that attendance is now playing in the state accreditation system. Under college readiness and post-secondary education, the new language that's proposed really is just a clarification of something that you had already said in your position. It's just being very explicit that we don't want the state to come in and set a tuition floor that applies statewide for dual enrollment courses. We want that decision on how to pay for dual enrollment courses to be left to localities. Under early childhood education, two new pieces. One deals with the idea of being able to use Virginia Preschool Initiative funding for programs supporting three-year-olds, and also new language supporting the idea of adding an additional membership verification window. The September 30th student count is what is used to identify the students that are eligible for VPI funding. But as you all know, we have a very transient population in Fairfax. People come and go from our community all the time. There are, there are families that would be eligible for, potentially for VPI funding, but because they weren't here as of the September 30th identification date, they don't, they don't count towards that VPI, the VPI student count. So this would be kind of a secondary look back at have we captured any additional students that have come in that would be eligible for us to draw down state VPI funding. Next is a change under English language learners, and this is asking the state to develop a process to allow us to better communicate and coordinate language proficiency testing results with other school divisions when we have. results with other school divisions when we have student transfers. As I understand it right now, the process is, A, cumbersome, and B, rather duplicative. So, they've already gone through a lot of testing in their home district, and when they come to Fairfax, they have to redo a lot of that. So, I think we're looking for a way to streamline the process and save some steps. Under Virginia retirement system, the Virginia retirement system relies on localities to provide a lot of information and a lot of services to their members. There's no reimbursement for doing that. In Fairfax, we do that through the supplementary retirement system, and a lot of other jurisdictions, they do that just through their HR departments. So, the ask here would be that we come up with a way that the VRS helps to reimburse localities for some of those services that we're providing, because we're relieving VRS of the burden of having additional service centers and having to have additional staffing to answer, you know, answer questions from employees and those types of things. And then, if you've seen, I think it's come through in the last few weeks, there's been a lot of discussion about changes that the state is proposing on how we can access Medicaid reimbursements, and the language that's clarified and expanded here builds on an existing position that you have, but it expands into some of the changes that the state is proposing and asking them to reconsider what they're doing so that we can continue to have access to those Medicaid reimbursements for students with disabilities. Four changes in the standards of accreditation and standards of learning position, which isn't surprising, given that it's one of your largest positions, because this is one of the areas that the state has most regulations in terms of testing, in terms of measuring student performance, in terms of measuring school performance. New language is being added to ask for a review of content standards, curriculum, and assessments to ensure cultural responsiveness. As a test is developed in Virginia right now, it goes through an assessment of cultural bias, but there's no kind of systematic method by which the state looks across the curriculum and across tests to determine whether or not there are potential biases. So, this is asking for the state to come up with a way to do that across the entire system. This new language being added to support the idea of counting a dual enrollment course and completion of that course in the same way that the state now counts advanced placement or international baccalaureate course completion. The idea being is that for graduation, a student has to have completed advanced placement, international baccalaureate, an honors course of some sort, or have completed a CTE credential. This is adding dual enrollment, because it's equally rigorous in terms of the types of curriculum that it goes through, so this would be a natural addition for that graduation requirement for students. Two clarifications are being proposed, and you all know this issue very well, in terms of how the graduation and completion index and dropout rate calculations for English language learners are calculated, as well as the timelines for how those English learners are incorporated into on-time graduation cohorts. In Fairfax, we have a lot of older students with very limited formal schooling that come into the school division, and there are not a lot of accommodations that are made at the state level to kind of adjust the way they look at their four-year graduation cohorts for those students that may have had a much more challenging background and may need additional time in order to complete, you know, both language proficiency and also subject matter proficiency. And then finally, this, the last piece here is an ask for the state to improve its assessment management and data monitoring tools. I think we're still, we're not quite still paper and pencil, but we're not that far off of paper and pencil, so it'd be good for the state to help modernize, because that data is very usable if it comes back to us in a timely fashion, but oftentimes, state data doesn't come back to us in a timely fashion. You'd be very happy to hear that this is the last page of proposed changes. All right. So, the last four, standards of quality. This one, I'm going to take just a second on, because it requires a little bit of explanation. The proposal basically is, is to ask the state to look at the way it funds its schools and move from a system that focuses the funding on numbers of positions towards a system that focuses more on students and the characteristics, the particular characteristics and the particular needs of those students. So, what I mean by that, for example, right now, the state provides funding for 17 positions per 1,000 English language learners for every school division in Virginia. That's roughly 58, roughly a ratio of 58 to 1. So, that's based entirely on positions, but that's not based necessarily on the cost of providing the services that those students may need. What a lot of states have done is they've gotten away from that very specific position-based funding model, and they've gone to a model where there's a baseline per pupil amount, and then additional increments are added based on the number of students that you have that might, you know, the students in poverty, or students who are receiving English language learner services, or students who are receiving special education services. The idea being is that the state is better reflecting the cost of providing the services to each individual student. That would be, I think, advantageous for a school division like Fairfax, because Fairfax has very, very significant numbers of students, but oftentimes, when you look at division-wide percentages, Fairfax shows as being relatively low in terms of the percentage overall of the number of students that we have that have, that are in poverty or are English language learners, but that population might actually be bigger than the size of virtually every other school division in Virginia, just that subgroup of Fairfax students. So, shifting the state to a system that was a little bit more pupil-centered would be advantageous for a school division and would better reflect the costs that you all face in terms of providing services to students. Under student safety, the proposal is to add some language, skip right over one, I apologize. Student health and wellness, the language being added to focus the state in on supporting programs to address both vaping and opioid use, public health crises. This is actually something that we would be doing, or that we would be asking for in conjunction with the county, and I'll get to that in just a moment. Under student safety, the ask is for the state to provide additional resources to help provide security personnel in elementary schools. Right now, that, what limited resources there are at the state level really are focused more on the high school and middle school level. This is asking for that funding to be expanded so that it can be drawn down a little bit more into elementary schools. It's agnostic in terms of the types of positions, it's just asking for additional help with security. And then finally, this is both the state and the federal legislative program. A couple of proposals on the federal side of the legislative program is to add some language, asking for state or for federal funding for mandated Section 504 Plan services, which would be very similar to the concept right now that for IDEA special education services. Now, I know that the federal government, the funding that we receive for IDEA services is grossly inadequate, based on the costs that we face, but this would have a parallel to that system in another area where we are mandated to provide those services. 504 Plans, as you're aware, are focused more on medical issues as opposed to special education services, but often they're coincident. And then finally, and this one may be worth a further discussion at the board table on Monday, is asking the state to consider a change in the school quality indicator that it uses under our plan, under our accountability plan that we send to the federal government, and change it from chronic absenteeism, which is what they use right now, to another possible indicator. The reason that I say that this is worth discussing, one is just the issue itself, I think, has been something that you've talked about a lot, how chronic absenteeism, because it reflects both excused and unexcused absences, this isn't simply about truancy, has a pretty fairly significant effect on some of our schools. And the nexus to the federal side is that this was something that the state had to choose as a possible indicator above and beyond test scores. It may or may not be appropriately placed under federal education. You may want to place it under your attendance policy position in the state level, but I just wanted to highlight that as something that it's probably going to be worth discussing on Monday. Ms. McLaughlin, who conveniently has left the dais, asked me a question about how your program aligns with the county's program, because as you're aware, there are a lot of other legislative programs out there, and in particular, your county counterparts have a legislative program which does parallel yours. You all are familiar with the joint position, Ms. McLaughlin, hello. You're familiar with the joint position that you have with the county, which really is focused on funding, but I just wanted to pull out, I'm not going to go through all of these, but I wanted you to see all the various areas where you have a position that is either identical or very similar in terms of its content and its spirit as a position that the county holds. So, there's an awful lot of places where you do have parallels between what the county is advocating and what you all are asking for. And at the bottom of that, I also just put a little timeline, just to let you know, the county adopts its legislative program on December 3rd, and its legislative briefing is on December 10th. And as you'll see, that is actually after yours. So, where do we go from here? Well, today, we had the presentation on legislative programs, so kind of get you primed for your work session on Monday. We have the work session October 14th, Monday. The final action on this program, on this agenda item, is scheduled for October 24th. November 5th is Election Day. That matters to you, but it also matters in terms of what the General Assembly might look like, because you could have very different policies and very different discussions based on the outcome of that November 5th election. So, you know, in part, we want to kind of stay tuned and see, because the direction that the General Assembly heads off in might be different come November 5th. It might not be different. I have no crystal ball to let you know anything that you all probably don't already know. November 18th, I put on there, that's the first date that the General Assembly members are allowed to submit prefile bills. I also put on there the General Assembly Special Session 1 reconvenes. If you remember, the governor asked the General Assembly to come back into session, I think it was in July, it was in either June or July, to discuss really firearm safety more than anything else, but it was really supposed to be focused on safety. They have been in recess essentially since that first day that they came back, but they do reconvene on November 18th, and there have been some pieces of legislation which have gone through the Virginia Crime Commission, which may come back for discussion on that date. Your legislative briefing is scheduled for November 25th, so as I said, it's before, it's prior to the county's legislative briefing, and it's also prior to the prefiling closing date for legislators. That doesn't come until December 5th. December 17th, we will see the governor's biennial budget. We have the vaguest idea of what the governor's budget will look like, but at that point, we will know more specifically, and then within a few days of that date, we will see the spreadsheets that show how much each individual jurisdiction is receiving from that proposed budget. And then, come January 8th, 2020, the General Assembly session starts for a 60-day budget session. And with that...
Thank you very much, Mr. Malloy. I have lots of lights in front of me, which means that everybody's really excited about this program, and I'm going to start with Ms. Evans.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malloy. I know we're going to have a longer conversation on Monday, so I will hold off on most of my questions and comments, but I did want to pinpoint a couple of areas that I think are critical, and also alert my colleagues to an amendment that I plan to offer. If you go back to Slide 7, on the accreditation and our advocacy, I do think that one of our top priorities needs to be advocating for a more rational approach to assessing schools that welcome and embrace our most challenged students and perform miracles every day and may find themselves unfortunately being, not meeting all of the criteria because of the number of very challenged students that they have, and in particular, those that often come to us in high numbers with little if any English and little if any literacy or numeracy in their home countries. So, I do think it's critical that those schools are being treated fairly. So, I did have one question about this that I'm a little clear on. Are we asking that the state specifically define and recognize CYF students as a separate category? Because that is an area where we, for those watching, students with interrupted formal education, so those who do, where it's not just a matter of an English language barrier, but where it's also students who are coming to us with, in some cases, little if any education in their home countries, and may come to us at 15, 16, or 17 years old, and the idea of having to graduate a student with that profile in record time is probably, well, it is unrealistic. So, are we, is that part of our legislative package to recognize that specific type of English language learner?
The proposed language that's in those two positions that are kind of summarized there doesn't specifically call out CYF or SLIF students, the students with limited or interrupted formal schooling. It does talk about the incorporation of students at various achievement levels into graduation cohorts. So, I think it comes at the issue indirectly, but it doesn't name them, it doesn't name that particular cohort of students directly.
So, I think we might want to consider that as part of our advocacy, because it's one thing to say that someone comes to us with very little English, it's another to say they come to us with very little English and very little experience with being educated. So, I do think that that's something that we should consider as part of our basic advocacy, because that, and I think it's fair to say, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we probably in Fairfax County have the highest number of that type of student coming to us, so...
Yeah, and I will, I will give credit, the State Board is starting to talk about those students. They really are becoming better aware and more aware of the particular challenges that that particular student group faces. We're not the only school division that has this, that has this issue. I've worked with colleagues in Henrico County, for example, who have exactly the same issues with some of their schools and some of their student populations. So, there are other divisions.
And again, I want to emphasize, we welcome these students. It's not a question of treating them, we treat them with great respect, and as I say, welcome and embrace them, but we do need to realize the challenges that they bring to us. And similarly, I do want to alert my colleagues that Ms. Corbett Sanders and I have been working on an amendment to talk about some of these online rating systems that so unfairly rate our schools, and these are self-appointed groups that, generally speaking, use average test scores as a benchmark of quality of the school. Now, we've already asked Dr. Brabran to address this, and we're awaiting his recommendations, Dr. Brabran and staff on that, but as one modest measure, I think it's reasonable to ask that government entities don't use or rely on or advertise these unfortunate rating systems that in some cases are very destructive and malign our schools. Ms. Corbett Sanders and I discovered that HUD, for example, uses one of them and has it on its website. So, that is an amendment that I would like to offer, and, Mr. Malloy, this isn't a surprise to you, I know, we have had an exchange about that. So, I'll look forward to working with you on getting some language on that, and anybody who has any ideas on how we can make this a more robust or extensive amendment, I welcome that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Mr. McAlpin?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I do want to start by commending Mr. Malloy and system leadership for bringing this to us earlier this year. This has been, it's always a work in progress, and we always try to find ways to make it better and more responsive to board needs, and I do think this gives us more time as a board to discuss it, so I'm grateful for that. I will also note that back in 2013, we created what was our priority document, which we have refined... have refined over the years, made a little more compact, based on board feedback. And on that priority list since 2013 was advocacy regarding the school calendar. So I do also want to commend you for getting us over the finish line. There's still a little ways to go to get complete control over the calendar, but we have surmounted that hoop of Labor Day. So thank you for your efforts on that. We are going to have a broader discussion of this on Monday, so I do ask if anyone has questions or is pondering anything to let Mr. Malloy, Megan and I, make us aware over the weekend, just to give some more preparation time for folks. And also, Sandy set a good example tonight with suggesting some amendments she's looking to bring forward. Certainly, if you're going to pursue amendments to the program, please have those at least in conceptual form by next Monday. And one other tasking I would give to the board is, because we have had some progress on our board priorities, I would like you to give some thought about what we will be emphasizing. I know in our meeting manager meeting, Ms. McLaughlin and I suggested this year, given the focus on sustainability of this district, and the push at the state level for electric buses and things of that nature, that environmental issues may be, may rise to that priority document. And certainly, the emphasis locally and at the state on vaping, I certainly think that will rise to that list. So if you have other suggestions, please, please come forward with those. One amendment I'm going to be proposing actually comes from some suggestions that staff gave us earlier this year when we were in the pursuit of our minstrel hygiene pilot. And Ms. Johnson suggested at the time, along with Dr. Braybrand, that we pursue additional funding at the state and federal levels for those products. And certainly, there are issues at the federal level on reimbursement. So that is something that I'll be working on for both an amendment to our state and legislative programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAlveen. Ms. Hines.
Yeah, thank you. So, thank you, Mr. McAlveen, for mentioning environmental sustainability. That it is in our shortlist for this past year as well, right? It's under flexibility, the final bullet. So yeah, I think that's going to be very important. I think there may well be a push of advocacy in Richmond this year for greater involvement in the kind of partnerships that we're going to need in order to achieve conversion to renewable energy in a lot of different areas, and making sure that our regulated utilities are doing all of that in the public interest. So I think we have probably some work and some advocacy to do there. And the wording that we have now, supporting efforts for incentives, opportunities, and targeted goals for the expansion of renewable energy and energy efficiency, seems like it covers most of that, would you say?
The only thing you might want to add is removal of barriers. I know, I know recently, there have been, there's been some discussions in terms of how the State Corporation Commission allocates kilowatt-hours for solar projects. And, you know, if they were able to expand that, that would encompass additional projects. So you may just want to add in, not only incentivize, but also remove existing barriers, too.
Thank you. I plan to do that. Thank you very much. The other thought I had, when we get to that Slide 7 that Ms. Evans was talking about, which is standards of accreditation and standards of learning. You mentioned the assessments, and that the assessments are, the tests are assessed for cultural bias. And so I had a conversation about this over the summer with our State Secretary of Education, because I was curious myself, how do we do that? You know, are we making an effort? And what I was told, I have an email where he said that basically what we do is, we have teachers who review test questions for a lot of different reasons, and they are asked, one of the questions they're asked is, does it seem culturally biased to you? And I'll bet most of them look like me, those teachers who do this, right? I mean, so to me, that is not a rigorous examination of bias in tests. I know that we could do better than that. And as a teacher who gives these tests, I see lots of bias in them, particularly background knowledge bias. And what I mean by that, if you look at, there's a released test, 2015 fifth-grade reading test, and all of the passages, you know, because there's a reading passage and then comprehension questions, all of the passages have what I would call background knowledge bias in them. There's a story of a kid who goes to a sleepaway camp. Now, how many kids in, you know, urbanizing Fairfax County have been to a sleepaway camp? Well, a few. But if you don't have that background knowledge, you are, you are already in trouble in trying to answer comprehension questions, and we know that. There's, there's brain science that tells us that. So I think we need to do much better, and I may offer an amendment that we make it stronger, that we, and I'll have to work with you on that, I don't know what to do, but if we advocate for a true and rigorous assessment of background knowledge bias in the test, and there is, it's actually a state, Louisiana has gotten permission from the federal government, apparently, to run a pilot of reading tests where all of the passages on the tests have content that every student has been exposed to in school. So in other words, if you have a reading passage that's fiction, and it's in fourth, fourth grade, it would be historical fiction from Jamestown. Because that's something every kid in school now has content background knowledge about. And, you know, your nonfiction passages are science that they have studied in school. So it's my understanding, you know, that Louisiana has recognized, and maybe other states as well, have recognized that background knowledge problem, and are trying to do something about it. So that's probably a long way of saying I might want to beef up our request there. Am I making sense?
Yeah, I, there is, there's proposed language that's in the draft document that's posted for the work session, which I can send you. And you can take a look at that to see if you want to expand or build upon that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Schultz.
I give you one guess about what my first question's going to be. Do you know what it is?
Does it have to do with the number of bulleted items in the program?
How many bullets are there?
I still, I still have your sticky note from a few years ago up on my board.
So how many bullets are there? Do you have an idea?
It's, there are at least a few hundred.
Okay, great. That's not great. I thought it was like 181 a couple of years ago. The reason I asked this, and you, I'm sorry, but you went there, legislative issues that have been in our package since the 1970s. I get that we want to take positions on everything. I would like the end result of this to have a page that has three bullets. The top three things that if you walked up to any legislator, you could say, these three things will make all the difference in the world for 189,000 students and 42,000 employees, full-time, part-time. Now, I think I know, if we only got a win on one of those, I think I know what that would be. What would that one thing, if we could fix one thing in the Virginia General Assembly, what would that one thing be that would make all the difference?
Would have to do with funding.
The LCI.
Exactly.
The LCI. And, and I don't care what else is sitting on there from 1970. I honestly don't. I mean, we could, I mean, yeah, you know, I don't understand exactly why we would want, can you bring up Slide 5, for example? One of the things that bothers me specifically is the potential, I mean, I get that they've increased the eye to compulsory attendance. Well, K through 12 is compulsory. Unless you, unless you're in public, private school, or you have a waiver, you're compulsory. And the whole issue is, is that we, we know, if you're in school, you do better. So I don't understand why we would start to wade towards something like student engage, the level of student engagement, and who decides, and that's super subjective, and why, why not just, it's very clear, either the student's in school, or the student's not in school. If the student's not in school, the student's not going to do as well as if the student were in school. So I feel like this muddies the water. We don't have to have all this conversation tonight. These are just observations that I'm making of things that I would slue us off greatly. And I know my colleagues love, like, we feel like we do more, you know, but it's my rocking horse analogy. You can be moving, you know, a lot in a rocking horse. You don't go anywhere. And, and so, in the end result here is, I would like for us, you know, and we're not going to with this board, this board's not going to do it, it shouldn't, the property not to. But I'll give a kudos for something that I do love. The dual enrollment, that's been a perennial problem, is why, why would we award a student, you know, credit for AP, IB, on all the other combinations, but not if they're actually dual-enrolled? You know, a kid going to Robinson and Mason and dual-enrolled, or, or, you know, Falls Church and Nova, you know, I mean, that's, I almost wonder, do we have a sponsor for that? I mean, like, to me, that's a no-brainer. That is a question I would like to have answered.
We don't have a specific one lined up, but I do have probably a half a dozen people in mind who would pick that up in about a minute, so.
I don't understand, like, right now, right now, that, I mean, if this is an election season, that's a gimme to both sides. That's, like, that's, that's easy. Who's going to say we shouldn't allow kids to get credit for a dual enrollment course? So that, I would encourage move to the top of the list, because those are, that's low-hanging fruit. You know, I don't see how we're going to have a lot of opposition to that. I, I don't understand, oh, shoot, I didn't write that slide. Can you go to the one that has the VPI for three-year-olds?
Same, same slide.
Oh, same slide.
Yes.
Oh, that's, why, yeah, why have Slide 5? So this is one that I don't understand why we're advocating for better funding for three-year-olds when we have over 800 kids, three years old and four years old, who never make it off the waiting list to get to us anyway. And this is my frustration with the number of times that I've offered budget amendments to try to get four-year-olds off the pre-K waiting list, and asked for the innovation for us to do things like public-private partnership and buy up slots in, in local preschools, because they're only four once, and then they're five, and then they're on our rolls. So if we advocate for more money, it doesn't matter, because we don't have any space to put them anyway. They're sitting, aging out on an 800-student waiting list. So, I mean, it seems like that's a, that's a fruitless effort. And then, us, just one more thing, and then you can answer what you want, or whatever you want. What is the ranking of Virginia in funding for education? To the other states?
In terms of overall funding, like?
For education, yeah. Not, not for us.
From all sources.
From the state.
So from the state, from the state, it's low. It's in the 30, 40 rank. Yeah, yeah, it's low.
I think it's like 48.
It's low.
It's really low.
In terms of state effort, yes.
So that's what should be at the top of the roll-up page, that we should hand to every legislator, every candidate who's running, say, what are you going to do about the fact that K through 12 funding in Virginia ranks? I thought I had read a George Mason study from Dr. Cabrera before he left that said that we were 48, but maybe that was, maybe that was college. I'd like an answer to that as a follow-up of where we rank in the nation. And just put it, put it out there. Say, this is, this is the problem. We can't solve any of these problems. But, you know, this is, again, a Christmas wish list and a pony and a, you know, and a rainbow kitten, and all of, all of the special wishes. But I urge my colleagues to try to get this down to a cover sheet that has the three things that will make the most difference, that we could put a thumb to the eyeball. And again, I encourage that we potentially go down as a group, whatever group we are constituted as, once they go into session, and do a in-force, you know, presence for the things that will make the most difference. That's my, my take on it.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Do you have any responses, Mr. Malloy?
I was going to say, I can, I can give a very brief response to a couple of things. On the VPI, the VPI position has more to do with how the state allocates VPI funding for slots. It's less, it's less in terms of our local, less in terms of our local waiting list, it's more in terms of the students, or the children that are on that waiting list that could be eligible for VPI funding. This would be one way for us to expand the number of students that are eligible to potentially draw down that VPI funding, because there is VPI funding from the state that Fairfax does not draw down, and this would add to the eligible, or potentially add to the eligible pool.
I know, but, but getting more funding, again, we don't, if we don't have the physical space for this, this is the whole, this is our, you know, perennial problem with the Board of Supervisors, is, you know, give us the slots. Or that we need to propose a more innovative way, like I've suggested, which is create a public-private partnership with all of the local, and I think, you know, some of the supervisors have even supported that, that concept of, you know, at least some. Some is better than none, because when they're five, they're coming to us anyway, so.
On, in terms of the spending data, actually, a couple of those data points are included in the joint position that you have with the county, but it looks more at the flipside that I think Virginia is 11th in terms of the local effort towards education. It doesn't look at the state side. Now, you can do the math, that if we're 11th on local effort, and it's a state and local partnership, then the state is going to be lower. But I can pull that specific number. It was, J-Larke did a comprehensive study, I think in 2015, that's the last time they looked at it. So we can pull that flipside data and include that as part of the, as part of the discussion as well.
The J-Larke study was Virginia-specific, or was national?
It was Virginia, it was Virginia, but it looked at national benchmarks.
Right, that may have been in Dr. Cabrera's study, because I was, it was a long study, and I may be remembering the statistic differently.
They probably pulled the data from there, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you. Sorry. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Malloy, and my colleagues, and listening to what was said. Definitely, first of all, I want to say I would support the, your recommendation, and I think Ms. Hines wants to bring forward, removing the barriers. I think that that would be very helpful for our environmental stewardship. I had a couple of questions, and I hope you'll remind me if these are for here, if they're more for the State Board, or if they should be included. In the past, we have discussed the need to be able to have our elementary school immersion teachers have just, you know, the single as opposed to the dual certification in order to be certified to teach. That's an area where I know I would really like us to see increase our ability to do that, so I don't know if that's included already.
That is actually an example of how long the regulatory process takes at the state level, because the General Assembly, two years ago now, I believe, passed legislation asking for that kind of, a new, a new sort of credentialing for those immersion, immersion classes, and the state has not finalized the licensure regulations for those. But they're in process, so it's something that the state has adopted, and it's something that will be ruled out. I just don't know what their timeline is. Typically, regulations take anywhere between 12 and 24 months to go through the full process of the vetting through the State Board, and the Attorney General's Office, and the Governor's Office, and then bout for public comment. And there's a whole number of steps that regulations go through.
So we're close to the 24 months?
We're relatively close to that 24 months, yeah.
You're saying there's no need to add it here currently?
No, I think that that's, that's really been addressed, it's just a matter of waiting for the, what the address looked like.
Okay, good. Well, please keep us posted on that one. I would like to advocate and head down to any committee meetings I can. Another question, I appreciate that, I think you have in here additional support for staff related to safety at the elementary school. I can't remember which slide that was. And my question for you is, I know we are doing some improvements and have some others that I think we hope to be able to do, like our vestibules that are more facilities-related. Is that included somewhere? Would you recommend that that would be something we add to help support facilities, student safety?
I believe you already have related language to facilities. This is just expanding the concept, because the focus of the position really was more on high school and middle school SROs, and this is getting the, you know, down more to the elementary level, which may or may not be an SRO discussion, but it is definitely a personnel discussion. But I do believe there is facilities, and if there's not, I can, I can bring language on Monday.
Okay, thank you. I didn't have that full one in front of me, so that would be helpful. I appreciate that. And finally, going back to the ways that we can, you know, and here- And, um, finally, going back to the, um, ways that we can, you know, and, and here, Ms. Schultz, uh, find ways to advocate for, uh, additional, especially per pupil funding and funding that perhaps isn't, is the LCI or outside of the LCI, um, especially when it comes to high mobility rates, students with disabilities, ELs, um, FRM students, which we know, you know, we have such a large population. Is there a language, do you feel that the language we currently have in there is sufficient, um, or is that something you think we should continue to review more strategically, I guess is the question?
In terms of the LCI itself, the local composite index itself?
I'm thinking more outside the LCI, so, you know, when we're able to get additional per pupil funding, um, for specific students' populations.
I think that's, that's kind of the concept of where this student-centered fu- uh, funding idea is going. I, I don't think you're gonna get away from, I mean, the reality is, is that there are disparities among jurisdictions in Virginia in terms of local tax base and in terms of ability to pay. If you ask any, anybody in the Virginia General Assembly, or any school board member in Virginia, uh, what they think of the LCI, they hate it. Everybody hates the LCI. We all hate it for different reasons, is the problem and why the discussion is always so complicated. Everybody hates it for a different reason. If you're in rural Virginia, you hate the idea that you have land that is being valued at one level, whereas it's been put aside in a conservation easement, and it should be valued at a different level. In northern Virginia, we don't like the fact that the local composite index pays virtually no attention to the fact that it costs thirty to forty to fifty percent more to live in this area than it does anywhere else. And the salaries that we pay reflect that, but the salaries that we pay just go into the gross number, and there's no adjustment for it.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, and I understand that, so I think, I'm a little bit, you know, we'll put that battle to the side, 'cause I know it's been there for, uh, at least a couple decades. The question is, do you feel that currently what's in there, either for our student-specific funding, whatever we call it, per pupil, and things like pre-K, that they are robust enough? Or I guess that's where I'd like the conversation to go, if, as you see, and perhaps, when, if there's a change in the General Assembly, um, I'd like us to really be on top of what might be the most helpful, um, wording and strategy for that.
You would actually be kind of in front of the curve, just by talking about student-centered funding? The, the topic has come up relatively briefly at the State Board, because as the State Board has gone through its standards of quality review, um, the standards of quality, because they're still based on personnel, a lot of their recommendations are still personnel-based, right? They're asking for additional positions per one thousand students for various things. To scrap that system and replace it with something else would be a pretty Herculean task, and it would take probably a few years and multiple task forces and all kinds of resources at the state level. It would be worth it in the end, but this would kind of put you ahead of that conversation just by invoking it as part of your legislative program.
Thank you. And just final question. Um, I believe we're the only jurisdictions where we have fully dedicated, uh, people like you, lobbyists, uh, as a school system, is that still the case?
You, no, actually, I have, I have multiple colleagues. Um, we, we come in ver- we come in various forms. Uh, some are contract lobbyists that are contracted fro- by, by jurisdictions. Uh, some are, are folks who have a full-time job within the system, but then spend three months of the year down in Richmond advocating on issues, so they may be, uh, community relations and government relations, or, or that. But we, there, there are a good, probably fifteen to twenty jurisdictions that have somebody who does something similar to what I do.
And so with the other jurisdictions that we know are getting close to our size, and also diverse needs, et cetera, uh, are they also sending people, do they have people down in Richmond?
And, and we oftentimes talk about exactly the same issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchuk. Ms. McLaughlin.
Given the late hour, and we still have some, uh, action items to attend to, I just want to, uh, extend my appreciation for Mr. McAveen, noting that vaping is something we're gonna wanna talk about on Monday, um, as a member of the skip team. Uh, this was something that we discussed during one of our large meetings, that getting the Board of Supervisors and the School Board, uh, to have something in our legislative package, uh, really asking the General Assembly to take some more, uh, direct action. The state of Merrill, um, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and also Rhode Island have taken statewide, um, efforts on this, and so we, we may wanna be looking at some shared language, uh, so it might require, um, engaging the Public Health Department, along with our, uh, senior leadership team, on what that might look like, but, uh, I, I believe our community is gonna want to see, uh, the largest jurisdiction lead on this issue, and really get, uh, Virginia, uh, to join some of these other states in some, uh, real, uh, action efforts here.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Darnak-Kofax.
Good evening, Mr. Malloy. How are you?
I'm well.
I've had the privilege of working with Michael, um, several times during my eight years on the Board as the, uh, State Legislative Liaison, as well as, um, utilizing his help when I was the Federal Legislative Liaison. So I just wanna thank you for your hard work, and, um, I think what I really appreciate about you, Michael, is the fact that, um, you look, you are able to see the big picture and see small victories, and you know how long it takes, and you have the patience and the tenacity to do that. I know you've worked with me, sometimes you're like, "You can't talk about that in that way," and, and I do appreciate that. But I, I think, I, I do wanna say one thing, like, while the pre-K issue about the match and leaving money on the table, and, you know, we've been round and round on that, and we'll continue to progress, but I think by bringing it up, by us alone advocating for that, by us talking about how, how pre-K is a game-changer for many of our populations, I wanna commend us on staff. Do you realize since 2010, we opened up thirty-three new pre-K classrooms, and that is serving six hundred and fifty-seven children? Those are good numbers. Ms. Heinz, I hope I see you smiling over there. Um, those are good numbers, and so even in spite of some of the very hard efforts that we have, we continue to show progress and growth, and some of that money was from different formulaic ways we were able to extrapolate it. So, but, you know, I'm always appreciative of any heads-up you can give us on wa- like, where are we now? When they talk about flexibility, exactly what do they mean? Are they gonna change the match, or, or what, what's the?
Well, one, one thing that we're actually looking at that came out of the work that, uh, that was done with the county on early childhood readiness, uh, is there are certain income thresholds in terms of being eligible. Uh, one thing that the county included as part of their legislative program, which I saw on Tuesday, was changing the eligibility threshold from if you make two hundred and fifty percent of the poverty level, uh, moving that up to if you make three hundred percent of the poverty level. So, uh, again, additional families could potentially be eligible for, uh, that funding. What we're trying to track down is we're trying to track down if that's specifically having to do with the childcare component that the county runs, or if that's more of a general VPI. And I'll have more information for you on that on Monday, and there may be an amendment to add, just to add that, that specificity to the ask.
Right, because I wasn't able to get the numbers from the county, and these are our numbers, these are FCPS numbers alone, so I wasn't able to get those. Another thing, I think, um, where I'm glad we're seeing progress, I think, uh, I can't remember if I was chair, or if I was just, um, a part of the, uh, it was the time I was with the, one of the legislative, you know, that was my position, state legislative. Um, and we told the delegation that if we counted our ESOL learners alone as a subset, um, what they were like, number the seventh, largest, sixth or seventh, and they were shocked. They were shocked.
We, we actually update that chart and give it out to our delegation every year. It shows the top twelve school divisions in Virginia by population size, and then it slots in, uh, free and reduced lunch population, it slots in Fairfax's English Language Learner population, and Fairfax's Special Education student population. They all rank among the top twelve, and if they were standalone divisions, they would be among the top twelve in Virginia.
Exactly, and I, I was fortunate to be there, one of the first times we presented that, and, and, uh, you, you presented it, but I was there, and, uh, I think the fact that we've come so far that you're saying, so, and I, I'll explore this more, um, on Monday, you know, any other thoughts you can give us as to what we can do to continue to, uh, serve that population best, and simultaneously, because of their coming to us, like, um, you know, just as when we enhanced our own ESOL, um, curriculum, we're still not where we need to be, but we, we did that in reference to, um, ensuring that, um, uh, making, making certain that, uh, these kids were getting the services they need. So I think, um, while we're still in the infancy in that, our equity work is helping, but anything you can kind of give me on Monday that we can lobby for, legislate for, as far as what they're looking at specifically, um, to, to, to acknowledge that these students come to us with these needs, how can they help us, and how can, um, knowing that it takes five to seven years to get them to graduation, wh- how can they be looked at, um, in that graduation cohort when we're doing that? And then my final thing, and you don't, of course, have to answer this now, but, um, last year, um, and the year before that, um, I worked with several of my colleagues at the federal level, um, advocating for, um, you know, the IDEA monies, and, um, I don't know, um, where we are in the state. I know where we were, you know, we're supposed to get forty percent. I know we, as a county, got ten percent. Um, I don't know where we are, um, from those kind of funds.
IDA funding, probably over the last few years, has kept up roughly with inflation, but not much more than that. There haven't been huge new infusions of funding into IDA. I, again, IDA is one of these issues where it was put into place in nineteen seventy-five, and from the minute it was put into place, it was not funded at the levels that they promised, um, and it's never come anywhere close to the levels that they had promised.
Okay. Look forward to more conversation on Monday.
Thank you, and I just have a couple of comments before, uh, we close out this, uh, agenda item. Um, and, Michael, thank you. This is fantastic, and I do wanna address the, um, concept that this is a Christmas list, because what this really does do is provide a, uh, really important tool for our delegation, so that, uh, you're only one person, and there are quite a few, uh, members of, uh, the State Senate and the, uh, House of Delegates. And what we do with this package is we have almost an index of, oh, you wanna know where Fairfax stands on individual issue? There it is. We now know what they, where they stand on that particular issue, and if they need, if the individual member of the House of Delegates or Senator has additional questions, or their staff do, they can start with what's in this document and go elsewhere. Now, I do think that, um, the concept of having a, um, prioritization page is a good idea, but I, I welcome this level of detail when we share it with the, um, the delegation, because it makes your life easier, it makes their life easier, so I appreciate what you're doing there. Secondly, just going down, uh, some of the areas that you've put into this package, dual enrollment, absolutely. As you know, that's one of my, um, pet projects, it's very important. Um, and I think that the emphasis and the joint effort with the county on dual enrollment is very important, because it does give a pathway for many of our students who might not be able to afford to head off to college immediately, but they are able to obtain college credit while they're in high school. So I very much appreciate what you're doing here, and, um, the next one is on the dropout wa- rate. Uh, you have it on page, um, seven, and would like to talk a little bit more about that on Monday, because I think we need to reimagine how we best serve many of these students who are dropping out, because many of the students who are dropping out, as Ms. Evans has explained, um, they come to us as students with interrupted formal education, or there's a fairly substantial, uh, percentage of them that are, uh, Ls, and they have competing demands of having to, uh, earn money to support their families. And so we need to, uh, I would be advocating for us to have more flexibility in how we serve these students, so that instead of dropping out, they may have, um, other ways of achieving their high school diploma. And, uh, so I would like to be able to talk about that a bit more on Monday, and have some input from Dr. Brabrand as well. And then on the, uh, page eight, where you talk about the weighted funding formulae, formulas, it would be great if you could share with us, um, and I don't expect this by Monday, but if you could share with us some different models of if the weighting is X, this is how much it means to us in funding, if it's Y, this is how much the funding level is. And, um, then my last, actually, two more. The, um, language on vaping, very much appreciated. It is a national epidemic, and so we need to, uh, work closely with the county and the state on addressing these concerns. But the last piece, which I don't see in here, there's a lot of, um, discussion about the impact on our free and reduced meals, um, funding from the federal government with changes of the SNAP program. And, uh, that could have significant impact as the number of students who receive free and reduced meals has increased over time. So I would like to see a, um, legislative priority on how to address that concern.
Okay. They can bring, I can, uh, I can bring information on that to the work session on Monday.
That would be fantastic. I really appreciate it. We look forward to a great discussion on Monday.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we're at item five point zero two, policy eighty-one seventy. I call on Ms. Darnak-Kofax for a motion.
I move that the School Board approve the revisions to policy eighty-one seventy, naming school facilities and dedicating areas of school facilities on grounds as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Keys-Gamar. Ms. Darnak-Kofax, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to give a little bit of history as to how we got here tonight, because it's a little bit of a complicated process, and there's some parallel things going on. So I wanna do this for the public, so they understand where we are. Um, after going through the last renaming process, there were several members of this Board and I who believed we needed to identify areas of improvement, and we really wanted a more thoughtful and transparent process. So as a follow-on, um, to, uh, re- when we did the last, when we recommended that Jeb Stuart High School be renamed to Justice High School, um, Mr. Wilson, um, had a follow-on motion that was passed unanimously, and it said, um, it basically asked the Board, asked the Superintendent to review regulation eighty-one seventy to identify, um, areas of improvement. And as I said, that was unanimous appro- that was unanimously approved. So while, um, right, when that was going on, I was also hearing from members of the community asking me about renaming Lee High School. And so, uh, while, uh, Mr. Wilson's follow-on motion was referred to the Governance Committee, I brought forward a forum topic, and that forum topic said, "To modify our school naming or renaming policy in an effort to ensure an inclusive, respectful learning environment as out, as, as adopted in our one Fairfax policy." We have a forum topic request form, I'll show it to you here, so I'm gonna read the different portions. That's the topic. It said, "Was this time-sensitive?" I said, "Yes." Um, and, uh, I, "To specify the topic in relation to a student achievement goal or policy," that was caring culture. And then you have the objective of the topic or conversation. So I am going to reread this again, because the forums are done, um, across the hall right here, and they are audiotaped, not videotaped. So I want, um, I don't want confusion as to, uh, what the forum topic was, or how it, it came to be. So it said, "We must examine in a transparent and comprehensive way the criteria by which FCPS can name or rename schools appropriately. This discussion should have an intentional examination of schools that are named after Confederate soldiers, or named after individuals with Confederate ties, because we have recognized that Confederate values are ones that do not align with our community. I further direct the-" I further direct the superintendent to provide the board via a work session with information on schools named after Confederate soldiers, schools named after individuals with Confederate ties, the date that each school was named or renamed, the reason and history for the name choice. In addition, direct the superintendent to develop a working process for action by the board, informed by best practices, including community-wide engagement, that the school board will follow once they determine what names should be considered for change." So, and that's a very long way of saying that we have policy, we're looking at policy tonight, and the way we execute our policy is through regulations. So that last paragraph was talking about the regulations. So now, as I want to also just give you the timeline of what happened. That was a forum topic that was, I brought, I submitted it to the board on February 6th. It was discussed at a regular meeting on February 7th of this year, 2019. All of the things that I had asked for were brought forward to our board at an all-day work session by Dr. Braybrand, and he talked about, that gave us the history of Confederate names, and which schools were named, which schools were named after Confederate soldiers, or which schools had Confederate ties. So while that was going on, then in August, the governance committee continued to meet to have revisions to Policy 8170 on naming and renaming. What we do then is, once it comes out of governance, we brought it to a regular board member, a regular board meeting, where we said, "There'll only, there will be no vote, but this will happen at a future meeting." It named the change to Policy 8170. We then, on September 16th, had an all-day work session about the renaming policy. And all of these things have Board Doc links, and you can go to those. We originally scheduled a meeting to approve this policy on September 26th, but we postponed that, because as I had asked in my forum topic, other board members wanted to ensure and review, even though we don't officially approve regulations, they wanted to look at the regulations of the naming and renaming regulations to ensure they lined up. So I know that's all wonky and everything, but it is a history. And it's a history here publicly, so everybody knows where we are and what's happening. So I, we have the new policy that's out there. There are very few changes. There are really two changes. I will also read those, just so you have them. Again, you can go to Board Docs. And one just says it's under Section 3, Policy 8170. It said, and this is a sentence that was, well, I'm reading two sentences in a row. "Final decisions on the naming of school facilities and the dedicating of areas of school facilities or grounds shall rest entirely with the school board. Schools' names will reflect an inclusive, respectful learning environment as outlined and adopted in our One Fairfax policy." You will note, that's exactly the language I used in my forum topic. And then the next part that's up for change is in Section 4, and this change, it says, "The board may also consider a change in the name of a school," and again, using the same language, this is the new language right here that I'm saying, "to ensure an inclusive, respectful learning environment as outlined and adopted in our One Fairfax policy, or when the board deems it appropriate." Those are our two changes. I look forward to hearing my colleagues' comments, and I'm hoping that provides a very comprehensive timeline of how this came to be, and where we are on voting for this tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Darinett Kofax. Ms. Keys-Gamar, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I would. And I thank Board Member Darinett Kofax for starting with the procedural posture of how we arrived here. And I would like to take a few more steps, because there's been a great deal of conversation in the community, some of it accurate, some of it not. And I think it's important that we understand how we got here, why it's important, and why I'm supporting this motion. Ms. Darinett Kofax began with a phrase at some point that said, that said we were focusing on Confederate ties. And that's extremely important, and I think it is fortuitous that we recognized the significance of 1619, and how slavery began in this nation, and where that led to, and how African-Americans have contributed to this nation. What I didn't include in that recognition was what that institution has meant. And because we, as a nation, and particularly Virginia, which has been the seat of the Confederacy, we have not been completely honest about what our history means with respect to the Confederacy. So I'm going to take just a few more moments to expand on what I didn't include in my recognition earlier. So we talked about Africans being taken from their homes back in 1619. To do that, they were stolen, they were jammed into a ship, hundreds of them repeatedly, they were terrorized, they were treated like chattel. Many died if they were too weak for the ship, for the travel, they were thrown overboard. And out of the hundreds that were put on that ship, only 20 survived. When they arrived on those shores, that was just the beginning of the terror and tragedy. Senator Tim Kaine said it best, that beginning in 1619, Virginia legislatures and courts helped build the legal architecture of enshrining slavery on this shore, "just as Virginians proudly proclaimed a society based on the truth that all were created equal. This dualism of high-minded principle and indescribable cruelty has defined us. The transatlantic slave trade was one of the most cruel atrocities ever perpetuated on humankind. And yet, how fortunate we are that the descendants of those African slaves, all who followed, are still here and part of this nation." Now, this historical context is important, because I think as we talk about education, we cannot sanitize what we're talking about. And unfortunately, in some of my conversations in the community, and I understand that, because we have not told the whole truth, even in our curriculum, it has not recognized the terror and the tragedy that this truly has represented. We're talking about cruelty, tragedy, murder, rape, and savagery. We're talking about lynchings. We're talking about an institution that dehumanized an entire group of people. And the Confederate Army fought to keep that in place. And so when we say we are identifying Confederate ties, that, in my opinion, is the reason why. I would also add that Robert E. Lee was a Confederate soldier, very high up in their organization. But after the war was over, he asked that his name not be used and lifted up, because he saw that name, the Confederate soldier, being lifted up as being divisive in this country. That's the context of this conversation, that has not, in my opinion, really been identified. And so I appreciate this opportunity to have that discussion. My fellow board member also mentioned the strategic plan, and as part of the strategic plan, we talk about a caring culture that is inclusive, respectful, that creates, that is inclusive and creates a respectful environment for every student. I genuinely do not understand how a Confederate name contributes to a caring culture. It is that simple. And I also know the history, that many of these names were placed on these schools as a part of defiance to the United States Supreme Court, when the Brown versus Board of Education decision came down. So that is why this is a discussion in this community, and I've heard many students, I've talked to many people. Not everyone agrees, certainly, but I've, certainly back when we changed the name of Justice High School, talked to a lot of people that were very excited about changing these names, and this is why. Because this is what this represents. It represents something reprehensible and totally contrary to our democracy. I understand that it is part of our history, but I don't think that we can continue to treat it with this sort of, I'm going to call it a, what is it, tooth fairy approach. We have to be honest about what this means. So what is being said in the community? Misinformation. They have, I'm hearing repeatedly that 31 schools have been identified, and that is not true. And I certainly want to make sure that our staff members can support that, and verify that. It is also being said in the community that it's going to cost about $1 million per school. We did not spend $1 million on Justice High School. I don't know where this number is coming from, but again, this is an election season. I want to make sure that we put out the correct information. Certainly, there may be members in the community that don't agree with the way that I've described this history. That is certainly possible. But it is the reality, as far as I'm concerned. And it is the reason that I am supporting this, and it is the reason that I will continue to advocate for a more honest and open and realistic discussion of what we're really dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamar. Ms. Schultz?
I'm sorry, sorry, Ms. Schultz, just a process question. I have an amendment, so I thought the whole point is, I read my amendment, and then we go to...
Other boards may wish, other board members can speak to the first, and then you can add, then your amendment.
Actually, that's not Roberts Rules of Order.
Roberts Rules is that my amendment gets read, that the maker and the second speak to the main motion. Then the amendment has to come first, because people will then speak to either the revised motion, or they vote down the amendment. It's always our process. It's got to be, I go next, to introduce this, so people can speak to the amendment. Then they'll speak to the main motion, whether it's been changed or not.
Well, I have here that I am to have other board members be able to speak to the main motion before an amendment, but if the will of the board, we can go ahead and have Ms. McLaughlin read her amendment, and I believe she has a second to it. So, Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to read your amendment?
Yeah, I do want to clarify for the public, though, it's not the will of the board, this is Roberts Rules, and that's why we're doing it this way. It's how we do our budget and everything else. I just don't want it to look like I'm trying to do something that's not allowed.
Would you like to continue with your amendment, please?
Absolutely. I move that the school board consider the following motion. I move to amend the main motion by adding "quote" and "existing" to the last sentence of Section 4, so that reads, "The school board may also consider a change in the name of an existing school or facility, and by adding the following language at the end of Section 4, quote, 'A process along with a set of guidelines for renaming a school or facility is outlined in the current version of Regulation 8170, procedures for naming school facilities and dedicating areas of school facilities or grounds. The guidelines will include: A school renaming request will be initiated through a board forum topic by at least one magisterial school board member representing students attending the facility, and one at-large school board member. If the board decides to consider a name change, there will be a one-month period of public comment between the school board's new business and final action item on the proposed name change. This public comment process will include a community meeting, a public hearing, and electronic mailed submissions. During this initial comment period, community members will be encouraged to submit renaming suggestions to the school board to help facilitate the final selection of a name, should the renaming decision take effect. If the school board votes in support of a school name change, there will be a one-month period of public comment between the school board's new business and action item, final action, for selecting the new school name. This public comment process will include a community meeting, a public hearing, and electronic mailed submissions. The superintendent will review the community input regarding the suggested names, and provide a recommendation to the school board for its consideration and action. It is the responsibility of the school board chairman to schedule the dates for, to receive recommendations from the community, and to take action on the renaming of a school facility."
Second. Seconded by Ms. Evans. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yes, please. I know it's a late hour, so I'll try to be very brief for my colleagues and the public. As you will see before you, my suggested amendment extracts existing language from the recently revised Regulation 8170 that is under the superintendent's authority. The goal of my suggestions is that adding this to our policy will clearly delineate where the board's authority is, and what our expectations are for the renaming process. This amendment does not change nor contradict the superintendent's regulation. In fact, as you will see from the bullets, they directly align with the regulation. This amendment will help the community better understand the board's authority in this process, as well as its commitment to transparency and strong public engagement. So I did review this with our legal counsel, to see if there were any concerns about this level of detail in our policy, and was assured that this amended language could be appropriately applied. And so finally, to my colleagues, as you're aware, two weeks ago, we were to take this up, and I had drafted an amendment. From that time, then the superintendent did some additional revisions to his regulations, and so in my desire to have that alignment, I had to wait and revise it, and we got that information today. So that's why my amendment came to you during this afternoon. But again, the key point here is just for the public to understand our significant commitment to owning and providing expectations for a fully transparent and strong community engagement in the renaming process.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Ms. McLaughlin for creating this amendment to the policy. Governance did take a look at the policy and make the changes, but this amendment is in keeping with a governance effort to have our policies be more robust and more detailed. As we're looking at each of our policies, we are trying to include more detail into our policies to make sure that the board's desires are, in fact, included in here. So this does make this more specific. I will go back a minute and say that, yes, our road to renaming Stuart High School was a lengthy and a bumpy one, but of course, it was the first time we did it. And it was a difficult process, but we did follow our regulations at the time. I did welcome the review of this policy and the regulations that accompanied it, to make it clearer to the public, and just a smoother process overall. Just to be very clear, Ms. McLaughlin's amendment does mirror what is in regulation, the new regulations that Dr. Braybrand has given us today. And I want to thank Dr. Braybrand for revising them. At our work session, we did say that we wanted the naming and the renaming regulations to be parallel. The way that we originally had had it, they were two very different processes, and that didn't really make a lot of sense, to have one for naming and one for renaming. Obviously, the beginning of the process is different, because with a new school, you've got a new school, you have to name it. With our renaming process, we have to make an affirmative decision that there is a reason to rename a school. So this amendment clarifies that there are going to be two steps to a renaming process, that we will have a one-month comment period that will include... that we will have a one-month comment period that will include a public hearing, it will include a community meeting, and it will include email submissions and comments. The one-month period will apply to the first step where the board is making the decision about whether to rename a school. And then there will be a second comment period of at least one month, which will also include a public hearing, a public, and email submissions, and a community meeting. So I think this is a lot clearer to the public. It's, it's going to be a lot smoother, and so I do support this amendment to clarify that this is what we intend as the way we're going to go about a renaming process. So, I will have more to say about the, the underlying motion, but I think for, for this amendment, this is not counter at all to the regulation. In fact, it basically, a lot of it's word for word with what's in the regulation, just to kind of enshrine it in policy. So, thank you for, for putting this into more detail.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Schultz?
So, I don't know if I'm going to ask the question to the maker of the motion or the secundar, because, Ms. Evans, you actually did a pretty good description, actually the best one I've heard so far, that you, you said that the process now will be that first we have a month of public comment on whether to change the name, and then, because that's not the process that's been described to date, the process that's been described to date is that the board decides first to change the name at a forum, and then we go into public comment. So, I would like to know, and whoever, whomever would like to respond, because the, the lack of clarity on that, that what was contemplated at our latest work session was that one or one board, the whole discussion, and I never really heard that we got down to an answer, where there was one board member or two board members could, as long as they have a student in a school, and I clarified this very specifically, and I said, so it doesn't even need to be a board member of the magisterial district, that if somebody else had one student, even if it was a pupil play student in another school, that person could come and say, I'm going to change the name of a school in your district, and it could be decided at a forum, and the decision would be first made to change the name, then it would be opened up to public comment for 30 days, and then we would go into a name selection process where it was kind of clear that we put that back into the superintendent's office where it looked like that might be on ours. So, could I first have a clear, have clarity on what that process looks like?
I mean, I'd be happy to, to try to answer that. The, the forum is simply the way to initiate the conversation. That's not, the forum is not to make the decision to change the name. The forum topic, and I think it's, it's perfectly clear, the way the regs read, that two board members, one magisterial and one at-large member, initiate the conversation. That's not where the decision is made to change the name. It initiates the conversation, and that triggers the first one-month comment period. But, Dr. Braybrand, is that the correct interpretation? That's--
No, if that's how you, if that's how you're posing, that's your motion, and if that's what you believe--
Well, right. Yeah, and, and I guess Ms. McLaughlin can, but, yes, I mean--
So, as the maker of the amendment, Ms. Schultz, that's specifically, the clear language says that if the board decides to consider a name change, and that's after it's come through the forum. So, Bullet 1 says it's that the forum topic is initiated by two school board members. If it comes out of forum, that's the second part. So, at the forum, the board could say to those two board members, thank you very much, we discussed it, we don't feel that it warrants considering a, a name change for discussion, and it just stops right there at the forum. If the board says, you know what, we're willing to consider, consider a name change, that's when the 30 days starts.
Okay. So, I, I wish we had instant videotape, because if we rolled back to that work session, that is not what was said at the work session. What was said at the work session was that we would make a decision at the forum to change the name. I'm happy to share our own video with all of you, but if this is the contemplated measure, this is actually an improvement, and I'm going to actually, I'm going to compliment you that we're not putting our decision to change the name of a school before there's ever any public engagement, because that has been my problem with this all along. That being, that being said, I'm going to make the precisely same argument I made, I think, a year ago, and that I made again rather eloquently in May, when I read the list of 31 names of the schools that were provided to us, and my same argument stands today, is that the, the argument that Ms. Keys-Gamara has made is that it's a moral argument, is that we are morally obligated to change the name. And if we are morally obligated to change that name, then we are morally obligated to change a lot more names. That you cannot unbundle, it's, because if we're morally obligated to change the name of one school, and other schools have that exact same association, precisely the exact same association, there are other schools that have names of Confederate soldiers, Confederates who fought in the Confederacy, and if that's the rule, I, I don't know what the rule is. I don't know if it's, you know, slaveholders, if a slaveholder is the moral equivalent of where we're drawing the line, but if it's Confederate, then we cannot consider one name, we have to change all of them that have that same association. Because if it's moral, then, and we change one, then it is immoral not to change the others. And so, under that guise, you know, and it's the, the same argument I made previously. If we're going to change it, then we have to go ahead and move forward, and we also have to attribute money. The notion that we are doing this when we have a balanced budget requirement by the state, and we have a past budget, there is no money associated with, with any of this. And I think it is right and proper to say, what is it we're not going to do in the current budget? Because we're going to have to take money from a line item in order to do this. I'm not saying that there's a problem with it. This is the public, I've always said, these are public schools with public money for public benefit, and if the public wants to change the name of their schools, that, so be it. The problem I have is when the board imposes its will on the public without due consideration for the public to participate in the conversation, and that when they do vote, that we actually listen to them. That's, that's, that's the, that's the other problem, is that previously, we've either changed the process along the way, or the communities voted, and we haven't listened to them, or the community did vote and gave us names, and we said, bring three names, and then five names were brought, and then we didn't pick any of those names. We should have picked one of the names that the community voted on. So, it, I, I don't see here necessarily as clear a process, but I understand that the superintendent, unfortunately, I'm sorry, you're going to have to do this again, looks like, will solicit the names. But I think this board has got to commit right now that if the community comes up with a name, there's no more of this last minute, you don't like what the community says. The community has got to have a voice. When this board imposes its will is where I have the problem. So, first, what's the money? What's the process, as long as, as the community's involved? And then, you can't change one if you don't change the other ones, because if, the argument's the same for this one as it is for, for many other schools.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. Strauss, please.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Ms. Darnick-Kofax and Ms. Keys-Gamara for your remarks, and thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, for your amendment, and Ms. Evans for your assistance with the amendment. The process to get to justice was long and hard, so I am pleased that we have modified the policy, and with the regulation, with the suggestion now of putting the clarification of the regulation in the policy, while we don't normally do that, I, I can see the efficacy in doing this. So, I will support all of it. From the speakers this evening, certainly, there is interest in changing the name of one high school. I did not hear 30 names. I really don't think that that's what is on the table here, and so I would respectfully disagree with Ms. Schultz. I am glad that the policy and now the amendment that adds in the regulation does include time and a good deal of community input, because those conversations are important. So, at any rate, I will support this, but it would not be my advocacy to change 30-some names from, I, I really do hear from the community of one name, so that is where I stand. But thank you all very much for the work on this.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. Darnick-Kofax. Ms. McLaughlin.
Oh, I think Mr. Wilson, were you waiting for your turn? Because I'm a go-back.
He'd like to put his light on. Okay, we'll put you on after Ms. Hines.
Okay, thank you. So, I think we're supposed to be speaking to the amendment and--
Correct.
--get it voted on, and then we speak to the main motion. All right. So, I just wanted to get clarity on that, and thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, I'll be supporting your amendment.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. So, I have a question for the maker of the amendment, and one of the changes that didn't get picked up that was in the previous regulation was the concept of sufficient support within the community for the, for a name change. And I, I do think the changes that you proposed are beneficial in the policy, but maybe you could talk about why that, why we didn't include that sufficient community support aspect.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Again, with the board going through the first name change for Justice High School, where we had this original language in the superintendent's regulation, there became questions of defining words such as sufficient. Did the board then want to determine what percentage that would be? How do you determine and define that? And so, one of the things that, when we looked at the revisions, both from the superintendent's lens of the regulation and also from the board, was how do we lay out a clear process, but in the end, the board has to make some deliberations? And so, when we have a process that's laid out, it doesn't give a magic number or a threshold. And without question, this is an elected body, and we will be judged by how we execute on the responsibility that we have. And so, this way, what we're saying to everyone is, at least a month, that you can all come forward, anyone with any concern, any opinion wants to bring it to us, and the board will deliberate. And the 12 of us may have a different opinion on what that threshold is, and we'll have to arrive at that. But putting in some magic threshold, we're, we're now here at 11 o'clock at night, I can't imagine what it would take for 12 personalities to start to decide what's the magic threshold and put it into policy. So, I think this is the, the best way we can approach this, and again, signal to the community that we want to deeply engage them in the process.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation. I mean, I wasn't suggesting that there is a magic threshold. I think just as a practical matter, the amendment includes that the public comment process will include community meeting, a public hearing, electronic mailed suspicions, and, and so with, in the absence of some sort of, of threshold, then I think we're sort of in this, in this position where even if the community was, say, 100% opposed to, to the change, then we wouldn't think of that as sufficient, sort of, to move forward with it, or to not make the name change. And I guess that, I mean, I don't think necessarily, I guess what I'm getting at is somewhat of what Elizabeth Schultz was talking about, with if we believe that we should make the change, then we should make the change. And so, I kind of wonder, you know, the, the previous approach of this board through the regulations was to engage with the community, find out what the community felt about the proposed name change. There was votes that were taken, there were community meetings, and, and then there was this determination by the superintendent if there was sufficient support to come back to this, to the board. Whereas, without some sort of measure, I'm not sure why we wouldn't just clarify in our policy to say, we don't want any of our schools named after historical people with ties to the Confederacy. And then, we, it's a cleaner decision, and as Ms. Schultz has said, we can, we can weigh it against other budget options, and, and we can, you know, I think other jurisdictions have made that sort of cleaner break than sort of a one-off, well, this year, we don't like the reference to Mosby Woods, and next year, we might not like the reference to Sangster, and the year after that, we might not like another one. It just seems like an odd way, if, if really we're talking about cleaning up the books, so to speak, on our, our names in our schools, it seems that, you know, if, either we're going to allow the community to have input, and we're going to weigh their community support and, and value that, or we're going to make a decision as a board that we're, that as a, as a reflection of Fairfax community as a whole, we don't want schools named after Confederate soldiers. And so, I'm not so, I mean, I do appreciate the changes you made, because I think they reflect sort of more involvement of the community, which I believe is, is an important part of this process, is engagement with the community and, and finding out what the community feels about it. But it, but I think without some sort of sufficient community support standard, then maybe we just end up in sort of a muddle at the end of the hearings and, and the, you know, emails and, and the, the community meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Pautchak.
Thank you. So, I appreciate the work both of Ms. Darnick-Kofax in preparing this and, and the amendment, and I, I think I understand the amendment, but I may have a couple of questions since this is on the amendment. So, just to clarify, what we are seeing here is that in this two-month period, the first month, while the school board is deliberating whether or not to move forward with the name change, the public will be given opportunities both to comment on the decision, whether or not to go forward with the name change, as well as encouraged to provide possible names during that first month period. And then, during the second month period, if the, I apologize, it's late, if it's voted on to change the name, then there is, then there is a discussion, I assume, both to collect names and to discuss those names? I guess that's the only area where I'm a little confused, is there kind of, I guess I've seen other school systems where first, there's the vote, and then there's a period to take suggestions, and then there's a period to, where the community, you know, either is ranking, while the, and the school board and, and the superintendent kind of look at those and weigh them and, and come forward to the final decision. So, I was just wondering how we came up with this process.
So, as was noted earlier by Ms. Evans, the goal in the superintendent's regulation was that whether we're naming a new school or potentially renaming an existing school, that for continuity and public understanding, that these processes would be very similar in terms of community meeting, public hearing, and email submissions. And so, given the importance of community consideration and reflection on not just renaming a school, but then what a new school might look like, or a new name would look like, we're almost giving a two-month opportunity for community consideration and reflection that if, if the board were to vote after that first month, we already would have started collecting from those who are supporting a name change to have brought forward some names for consideration. So then, when you have a community meeting, should the board decide in the first action to, that yes, there's merit, we're changing the name, now you're going into the second community meeting, community meeting of what would that name be? You already have some initial community input from those who are saying, please consider those names. those names. So when you go into the second community meeting, you could actually say, in our first process, while the board deliberated the potential change, we captured up some of these names, now we're sitting in a second community meeting about what names to consider. You already have sort of a baseline of some names, along with the community bringing forward some additional names for consideration.
Okay. Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I'm just trying to understand, while I know originally the goal was to have this regulation come later, so I appreciate that you, you've put this into the, the board's hands for the policy. I'm just wondering, and it might be wording, and this is where it just gets a little bit into, you know, the weeds, because we are now putting the weeds in the policy, and that's okay. I'm just trying to understand if it might be more clear to say that during this initial comment period, community members will have opportunity to separate them, right? Both to give comments on the, on the recommendations, whether or not to, to change the name, as well as kind of in a different bucket, just, I don't know if we want to separate them to be able to give options for names. So that's my only question, and it might be the late hour, and it might be the, you know, we haven't gone through, I have not gone through this process of naming a new school, so I don't know if this works well, then that's fine, but that's, I'm okay with this in, in theory, but I just want to make sure that if we're going to this much detail that it doesn't cause more confusion. That's my only, only concern, and I see some of my colleagues disagree with that, and that's fine, and maybe they've gone through this process, and we agree that this is the way forward. And I guess in the end, I just want to make sure that we have a process, that we're moving forward, and that we can do that. And then my only final thing, in the final sentence, I believe our school board is a chair, not a chairman, so that's my only recommendation, that our school board, I believe we, we call our school board a chair, not chairman. Do we call them chairman? That's all. Okay. That's all. So I, I'm okay with this amendment, if that's the way we're, we're moving forward, but I guess, I don't know if we're still going to have regulations related to these, or is this supposed to, we will?
Yeah, Ms. Palchek is-
This just guides the regulation.
Yeah, Ms. Palchek, as I understood it, the board actually said, and certainly even governance had the conversation, that when we're looking to have greater alignment between policy and regulation, it, it was going to be helpful, because what happened to this board with the Justice Stewart renaming is that we had a policy change that we put in place, and then Dr. Garza really created new regulations, and the board didn't know anything about them. And so when we found ourselves in the renaming process, we were suddenly finding out about how the superintendent took our policy and decided to operationalize it. So the goal of this one is, the draft policy was written so narrowly, and so, in such a way that it didn't say anything about what the board's expectations of what that operational process would be. So this is taking language from the Superintendent Braybrand's ownership of reflecting on what, what went well and what didn't go well with the justice renaming, how do we have better operational processes related to this, but it still left our policy without saying anything from the board's voice and the board's directive of what our expectations would be. And that's why it's, it's looking at what the superintendent is saying to us, this is how I understand the best processes going forward. I'm bringing this to you all as amendment, saying, if we're in agreement with the superintendent's regulations, we're not putting everything in here word for word, but it's capturing the, the key aspects of what the public can expect, what the board can expect.
Okay. So I'm fine with that. I think, again, I would just share, you know, since we are delineating this in the policy, that my hope is that the regulation that goes along with this will be more, will be clear about the process, just so it does not create more confusion in this, the timeframes that are put forward and they're overlapping in some way. So I appreciate that, and I guess so, as long as we're clear that the regulation and the way it's carried forward will be very clear about, you know, the fact that you're both making a decision on whether or not to change it and to collect names and all of that. So I'm okay with that, if, if we feel that that's going to happen through the superintendent's office.
Thank you, Ms. Palchek. Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is late. I have a different take on the amendment. The, I, I mean, I certainly understand what the maker of the amendment is trying to accomplish is, because of the significance of the discussion we are having on the renaming policy and process, wanting to give elevated visibility of the process for the renaming of an existing school in the policy itself. So, you know, taking the language being, language drafted by superintendent in the reg, proposed regulations into the policy, I think that is what the amendment trying to, is trying to accomplish. The question and concern that I, not necessarily a concern, question that I have is, from optics, when you look at the regulations, regulations, it has process for naming new facilities as a separate section, in, in, it has renaming existing school facilities as another section, as a detailed process. It has renaming non-school facilities in another detailed process, and has a separate section for dedicating areas of school facilities or grounds as another section in regulations. But by just putting one of those four sec, processes, one of those four sections into policy, we are, I know, we are elevating the visibility of that, that particular section. But then, the policy looks somewhat lopsided, sort of in favor of, in visibility sense, for the renaming of an existing facility, because the policy itself deals with all different situations, not just renaming an existing school. But amendment is going to only give a very detailed process for renaming of an existing school. That's the question, and that is where it is giving me a pause, whether we need that detail just for those, one of those four sections into the policy. If you were to give a detailed process, because community, we ought to give a transparency to the community, visibility of the process to the community, maybe have all the languages from regulations into the policy, or just make a reference to the regulations for detailed process. I mean, that's where I am.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I do have a couple of go-backs. I have Ms. Schultz, followed by Ms. Kiesgahmara.
Okay. I got less clear, the more people talked. I, I need, and Ms. Palchek, I thought you were getting there, you were, you were getting, you were sort of getting there, and I thought I was going to follow it. I, I'm not sure I understand this amendment. What's different than what we already have? I, I guess I'm trying to figure out now why we're changing, because we, because what I hear is a compelling need, everybody, Ms. Kiesgahmara, you made a wonderfully eloquent speech tonight about, that fulfills in and of itself compelling need. You're saying by this process that we are going to engage the community, so you're going to have that, you know, sufficient community, and I don't know if we got, why we got ourselves wrapped around the axle last time about what sufficient is. I'm trying to understand now, what's different about this than what we're already doing? And if it's not that different, why can't we just use the language that we have and just go out into community and say, do you want to do this, and have some community meetings, and get the interest, and then make the decision, and then off you go? Like, I don't even understand why all this is necessary, if you've, if we decide to do this. So can you explain to me how this is different than what we already have?
So as, as I understand it, in talking to people in the community, and I've never been a fan of our policies that are so lean to the point they don't speak to the board's commitment and expectation on, on our responsibilities as a governing body. So too often, as someone who's sat in the Governance Committee for probably five or six years now, I have a constant refrain of, what does the regulation look like, and do the crosswalk against policy? No, Ms. Schultz, the reason I'm saying is-
But I just, but I need to understand, just, if we could narrow at this-
Ms. Schultz, if we can let Ms. McLaughlin finish, and then it's your turn, okay?
I know, but at this hour, it's my, it's my question, and I'm trying to narrow the response to get-
That's okay. Clarify your question.
I appreciate it. Let her finish, and then it's your turn, okay?
No, 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 Ms. Schultz, no, I want Ms. Schultz to clarify, what's the question you want me to answer?
Right. I just, I would love to, I, we can pontificate about what happened in governance at another time. I just want to know, what's different about what you've written as an amendment? If, if it's now providing for community feedback first, and then we get names, and then we come back and have a vote, how is this any different fundamentally than what we already have, and why do we need to change it? Why not just go do it? What, what does this do differently?
So, Ms. Schultz, in talking to people and in my community, some of the things that I've heard is, when our policy, as we would vote on it tonight, which I would vote it down, I will not be voting for this policy tonight if my amendment fails. I'm just telling everybody right now. And the reason why is because when we fail in our policies to be very clear about board expectation of community engagement, then the public doesn't go digging around to find what the regulation's going to say, because that's the superintendent's commitment. The policy is our commitment. So either we commit to what we think is a core value of the board, which is a very robust public engagement process for any renaming consideration, consideration. So I, I think this language is important. I can support what Mr. Moon's saying, if he wants a friendly amendment that says, this language matches for a new name, and it matches for a rename, and he wants the consistency of, in the section of this policy, the broader policy, under a new name, put this exact language in there the way, that's all fine. I just want to make sure that this policy is fixed, because, Ms. Schultz, you and I both know, we found ourselves on the same side of this challenge, was the superintendent created regulations that the board had no voice on, we didn't know anything about it, and then all of a sudden, the public was saying to us, how come this is how it's all happening? It wasn't in your policy. We own this, and I think this is a great way of showing the community our commitment to it.
Okay. I'm glad I asked the question, because that actually, that actually helps. The only thing I don't understand then is why not have the community begin the conversation? Why not have the communities drive the conversation about what they want, rather than we start by imposing the fact that we're going to change it? Because the, I get back to, you know, this board sometimes acts like there are schools. They aren't. They're the 1.1 million residents in the county's schools. And while, and I very much appreciate the people who signed up tonight, but there clearly was a, you know, an effort of the people who came tonight to show one voice for what they were speaking for. And that doesn't, I can't take that as a reflection, that that's how the community feels. I'm assuming that there's a sense that the, the community feels this way, because it's not my district. The problem I do have with this is you all have still created a policy that says that, you know, if, if Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders had a student in one of my schools that's wholly owned within my district, and she had a pupil-placed student in one of my schools, she and one other at large could decide to come into my district and make a decision to change my schools, and I don't really have a voice in it. And that's, that, that is exactly-
Ms. Schultz, that's, that's actually not correct at all. What it says is simply they can bring the topic forward to a forum discussion.
Okay. Well, I still, I still have-
Ladies, we, we have an order here, back and forth, which is very nice, except it is out of order.
I didn't invite, I didn't invite that, I'm actually still commenting, that I'm trying to get to the clarity, that this is a, this has been somewhat convoluted, because it is not what was said at the, at the work session. If there is an attempt to engage the public greater in this amendment, I support it. I still do not like, though, that it is the board driving the conversation at the public instead of the other way around. That denies the fact that the public, you know, has the ability to bring concerns and significant concerns, like fair grade, like leader start times, like zero tolerance reform, like restore honors. There are many ways in which the community has the ability to rise together and say, we would like the board to pay attention to something like this. And many of us sitting at the table have been on the other side before we were ever on the board, and part of those significant movements that created change about grading practices and sleep times and discipline practices, and it wasn't the board imposing its will on the public. The public said, hey, we need to look at a change, and we, we drove that change.
So, Ms. Schultz, I appreciate your comments, but we are getting very late tonight.
It's not my fault we're here at this hour.
I am going to allow others to speak at this point. And before we go to the go-backs, and there are quite a few, I will express a thank you to Dr. Braybrand, because I was one of the ones at the work session that felt that we needed to have parity in, in the same structure that supports naming as renaming. And so what you and your staff have done is actually put the process in a parallel, you know, a parallel track, so it's the same process, if it is a naming or a renaming, and it is focused on community engagement. I would also correct any concept that Ms. Corbett Sanders would consider going into another magisterial member's district with a pupil placement. Actually, it doesn't. But I, I appreciate your creating a scenario such as that, but there is no intention, at least by this magisterial member, to go into another magisterial member's schools or any other. So I am going to go back to the list of people. We have go-backs, starting with Mr. Wilson, then Ms. Kiesgahmara, then Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah. I think that, you know, the, the public watching, what they would like is some clarity, really. I mean, what schools are we talking about? How much is it going to cost? And when do we want to make the changes? I don't think it's very complicated. Our policy already allows us to make changes if we feel there's a compelling need. Maybe that's the wrong-
So, Mr. Wilson, if we can focus on the policy behind, before us, thank you.
Yeah, so, the amendment, we're talking about the amendment, and the, and the issue that I have is that the amendment, I think, actually makes it less clear as to how many schools we're talking about. What's the role of the public in terms of helping us make that decision? Because we don't, we don't have the idea of support in the community, it's just, we're going to, we're going to solicit public comment at a hearing or have a community meeting. I mean, it doesn't really talk about whether there's, needs to be support or not. So I think what the public would like tonight is for us to clarify how many schools we're talking about, and how much money we're going to spend on it. And that's, I don't think, we don't need to make these changes in this, in this proposed amendment to give them that information.
Wilson, as Ms. Key, or Ms. Darnak-Kofax clarified earlier, the, and as, is in the proposed policy with the amendment, there isn't a list of schools, there is a, that is built into this policy, there is a structure that allows for the, a forum to be initiated, a board forum topic by at least one magisterial school board member, representing the students attending the facility, and one at-large school board member. So that initiates any sort of discussion. So that's what the clarity that Ms. McLaughlin's amendment does, is it, it actually puts that in the policy itself, rather than having to go to a, a regulation. However, I see that-
Madam Chair, if you and I want to have a colloquy on this separately, I think, I don't think we need to do it on mic, you don't need to respond to my comments, although I do appreciate it, but I would disagree with you on what that actually says.
Well, thank you.
Because I could, I have students that attend schools that are outside of my district. But I also, just to clarify- But I also, just to clarify, that what we've been talking about tonight, at this dais, public input is specific. It's very specific. This amendment is not specific. It's talking about a process about some schools. Ms. Narinak-Kofax's forum talked about a specific list. And so, I think that's what, that is, it wasn't, she didn't provide a list, but her forum talked about coming up with a list of schools.
And we had it.
Okay, so that's what I think the-
So, excuse me, one person at a time, and Mr. Wilson, you had stopped speaking, so we were going to other people, and so-
Well, Madam Chair, you were responding to my comments, so I don't think my turn was over if you're responding to me while I'm on my turn. But I just think that what we've got, what we're putting forward right now, and discussing, is actually creating more confusion. We've got a policy in place, we have the authority, as a board, to rename every school if we want to. And I think what the public would like is some clarity. Are they going to have a voice that's meaningful? Are we talking about Confederate, schools with ties to Confederate soldiers? Are we talking about maybe beyond that, slaveholding people? Or maybe we would go even farther than that? I think people want to know what this board is intending to do. And I think it is a budget issue, and I think it is also an issue that we should be clear about in our policy. Why the vagueness of, you know, to include, we're going to take out, you know, we're going to add in language from our former, our former regulation, but it's not really the former regulation, because now it's the proposed regulations, it's matching proposed regulations that the superintendent gave us today. I think it's, we're actually obscuring what we want to do here for the public.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Hold on.
I call the question.
Too many questions been called.
Second.
All those in favor of the call to question?
On the amendment.
So we have Ms. Strauss, Ms. Hines, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Narinak-Kofax, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Kies-Gamarra, I'm sorry, not, I mean, Mr. Moon, Ms. Kies-Gamarra, Ms. Evans, that gets it. No, I'm not going to call the question at this point. So, I'm not going to vote for that, because, but I am-
It passed, though.
It passed, okay.
Yes, it called the question.
It was called the question. I only get one, two, three?
I'm only going to vote, it's fine, four, but-
Okay, let me try again. The called, let me count, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Hines, Ms. Palchuk, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Narinak-Kofax, Mr. Moon.
Just to be clear, we don't revote in order to get the vote that we didn't get the first time? That's another violation of Robert's Rules.
She didn't count. That's not revoting.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. So, that motion carries, we're, that motion carries, we're now going to go to a discussion of the main motion, or no, we're going to vote on the amendment.
Sorry, Karen.
We're going to vote on the main, on the amendment. So, rather than reading the amendment again, if everybody agrees, we're going to, the amendment is on the screen, and I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the amendment as it is put forth on the screen. So, we have Ms. Strauss, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Hines, Ms. Palchuk, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Narinak-Kofax, Ms. Kies-Gamarra, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those opposed, those abstaining, Mr. Wilson and Mr. Moon, that motion carries. So now, we will have a discussion of the main motion. And I have quite a few lights up here, but I do not-
Madam Chair, I have a moment of personal privilege.
Yes, sir. Mr. Moon.
Madam Chair, I have out-of-town trip coming up, and have to get up at 3:00 in the morning, and it's almost midnight, I'll probably have a two hours of a sleep. And if I could excuse my absence, I'll be supporting the main motion.
Yes, sir.
I'll supporting the main motion, as amended.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your vote, safe travels.
Will his vote count?
No, his vote will not count, because he will not be present for the vote. He's just expressing support. So, thank you. I have Ms. Hines.
Thank you. So, yeah, on the main motion, thank you very much, Ms. Narinak-Kofax, for this work. I also do want to say, Dr. Braybrand, since we're on the, we're sort of on the subject, in response to Ms. Batang, our wonderful student representative's comments earlier, she mentioned about how she felt as if she had to disprove assumptions that teachers made about her based on her background or her race. And I just have to say, that cut me to the quick, I don't know how you felt, but as a teacher, I mean, look, I make mistakes all day long, but that is one you do not make. That is inexcusable and unforgivable. And I hope that's the message that we send to teachers, that you absolutely must be extremely careful about making assumptions about children based on their background, and in any way showing that to the child, for sure.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. So, I would just try to be quick. Our Justice High School experience was, in the end, good, but it did make clear that we needed a workable policy, that was more transparent, more efficient, and that clarified the role, the roles of the board and community members. And, you know, I agree, we could make any name change right now that we wanted to, given our current regulatory and policy framework, but we're just trying to make it, again, better. And that's what I think this will do. The community, you know, we don't, I don't want to send the community the idea that they will vote on whether or not we change a name, or they will vote on which name we pick. I think we gave that impression last time, it's maybe, I don't know if we gave it, or people picked up that they had a vote on whether or not we would change the name, and what it would be. We vote. That's our responsibility, and we know that. And this is just our regular process, right? We put something out there. In this case, we make concerted and significantly greater effort than usual to reach out to the community for comment, but at the end of the day, we vote, and these are our responsibilities. You know, I think the idea that this puts us in a muddle, you know, as elected officials, we need to be comfortable in a muddle, especially when we're talking about things that have to do with the morality and the values of the community. I don't see a list of 31 schools. We, I'd be very surprised if we could do more than one at a time, anyway. So, there's no way this board or the next board would get to more than one school, I would suggest. And the only one we're really hearing about right now is Robert E. Lee High School. And let's be honest, you know, a name like Robert E. Lee belongs in history books and in museums, not on a school. And I want to thank Ms. Kies-Gamarra so much for your comments tonight. That name on a school building lifts up the terror and tragedy of slavery, of the Confederacy, of the generations that followed in Virginia, and fought all progress toward racial equality right into my lifetime, and all of our lifetimes here. And so, I think it's very important that we have a process that will work, and it will be, we'll be able to start it as soon as possible. And so, again, I thank Ms. Narinak-Kofax, and I look forward to, are beginning to make process, a progress on any name that comes from the community, and I think Lee High School is probably the one that we will see sooner than later. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you. And I appreciate following Ms. Hines in this, and also thank, well, our Governance Committee, and those who've worked on this, and our superintendent and his team. And I agree, we are an elected body, elected by the people of this county, and if we, as a body, or future bodies, decide that a school's name, for whatever reasons, is not appropriate in 2019, or 2020, or moving forward, then this body does have that responsibility to make what could be a difficult decision, that's for the best needs of our students. So I do support both this policy and the corresponding regulation, even though we do not vote on that. And I do think that it does improve our current process. We did have a process, there were some kinks, this process also will probably not be perfect, but hopefully an improvement on our last process, and that's all we can hope for. I do appreciate that it does include very detailed information and ways to gather community inputs, when the input is gathered, when the school board is making decisions, and how this will be communicated and shared with the community. So, there is no perfect, but I think this is very good, and I appreciate the work of my colleagues in putting this together, and I am very happy to support this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palchuk. Ms. Schultz.
I'm wondering if the, and I don't know, I guess, I don't know now if the maker of the motion is Ms. McLaughlin or Ms. Narinak-Kofax. So, would you consider a friendly amendment that says, can we have the full language back that says that the, the magisterial school board member representing the majority of students attending the facility?
Sometimes it's fairly split, or three-thirds, so.
Or, a preponderance, a preponderance.
I would defer, I would like to hear a discussion on that before I add, I'm not prepared to make a decision by myself.
Because what we're talking about, again, is representation, is the people who elect us, you know, we're now putting a position where someone who is unelectable and unaccountable to constituents is participating in the name of a change, the change name, I can't even get it straight. And the reason this is important, and everybody seems very intent to hide behind the opacity of this language, and there is still a lot of lack of clarity here. And you can sigh all you want, Ms. Hines, I don't think it's respectful. We are trying to have a respectful conversation at this table. I cannot help the fact that this was put on an agenda that had a lot at the front end. This is when the conversation occurred. So, I am trying, I have a due diligence to try to get to the best governance decision possible, and I'm being told that you don't even have to have a preponderance of children, and that there's not really a good explanation for that. And the reality is, is that we cannot unbundle, if this is about Confederates, how are we not having a whole list of schools that have all the other Confederate soldiers who fought in, if this is about the Confederacy, and wiping that out, and wiping out that scourge, we have a problem in that we have all these other names. Mosby Woods, in particular, Lanier, in particular, Sangster, in particular, Shreve Wood, in particular. So those at a minimum, and that doesn't even count for all the other associated, but if you, if we're drawing the line at Confederacy, you must, you cannot say, it's only one school, because those were the eight people who showed up in the, on the speakers list tonight. It doesn't work that way. So, we can't, we're cherry-picking, and this is the problem that got us burned with the community on the Jeb Stewart to Justice name change, is we manipulated the process, you know, over and over again, and the community gave us, you know, a pushback, because they kept interpreting that we were manipulating things just enough to get the answer that we wanted.
So, Ms. Schultz, are you making an amendment to the motion, or you, and if you-
Well, we're back, we're back to, now we're discussing the main motion. This is the way Robert's Rules works.
Correct, and I under-
Is the chair does not, the chair does not interrupt the person who has the microphone. I have the microphone, until I yield the microphone. We don't have a time limit, like we do otherwise. So, when I yield the microphone, when I yield the microphone, then I am ceding to the next speaker, and the chair needs to respect that. We need to, we need to honor Robert's Rules, because we just, we just did it in the last vote, and people will be able to watch the fact that we did not have enough votes to close the prior. But we took another vote, because somebody got tired and put their hands up to make it eight. We are manipulating the process right now, and we are not honoring our own governance practices, and we're not honoring Robert's Rules. And you can see the lack of professionalism is happening right here at the table right now. If we can't follow our own process and honor our own governance, how is the public supposed to put their trust in us, that we are going to do the right thing when this goes out to the public? So, yes, I guess I am gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion, because I think that there should be a preponderance of students at a school, and that a student, or that a board member, as was articulated, and I specifically got clarity at our work session, and I was told, yes, it could be one board member who has as little as one pupil-placed student in someone's school. And an assertion now, oh, I would never do that, that's not what this says. That is not what this says. And so I would like that clarity, because at least the public will have the confidence that if this carries forward, there will be accountability, that it's going to be the person who has a preponderance of students at a school. So I would like to make a friendly amendment to insert preponderance, preponderance of students.
We-
Amendment should be seconded, what is going to be the friendly amendment? Right, so you're making the amendment, Ms. Schultz?
I'm making an amendment.
Second.
What's the amendment? I'm going to change it.
I don't, I don't believe I'm addressing a colleague, I'll address the chair. The chair, I would say, please, to add, school board member with a preponderance of students attending the facility. At least one magisterial school board member representing the preponderance of students attending that facility.
Where are you inserting that, ma'am?
I'm watching it, they've got it. Representing the preponderance of students, or a preponderance, a preponderance of students attending that facility.
No, that's in the policy.
We've made sure that the policy mirrors the regulation, that's what we've been discussing all night.
But your amendment is to the policy.
We passed the amendment, so this is the motion.
Correct. So, your motion on the table, Ms. Schultz, is to insert-
Well, the top, the top, number one, at the, one at the top should not say that anymore, because the amendment became the main motion.
We understand that, but this-
So, starting after that?
It's inserting two words, a preponderance of students attending the facility. And that accounts for, it might not be the majority, but at least it's a preponderance.
So, Ms. Schultz, you've made the motion, and it's seconded by Mr. Wilson. Ms. Schultz, do you want to speak to it?
Just, I just think that there has to be an accountability, and when it was clarified for me at the work session, that, and this was the clarification that was made, that one board member with one pupil-placed student in one school, and another at-large, could bring this, and that's, the lack of clarity that's currently in this language, basically makes it an unaccountable action by this board, because then they can bring it and get five other votes at a forum, which is not on videotape. Fortunately, it has an MP3, but it's a meeting that has very little participation by the public, it's in a side room held over there sometimes, before our regular board meetings, and it's the least transparent type of meeting that we do. And so, at least people will know that it is a board member that I brought, and I don't think there's anything that does, that changes fundamentally what you want to do. This adds a measure of accountability that I would think this board would be eager to embrace after the Jeb Stewart to Justice issues that we faced.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Mr. Wilson, would you like to speak to your second?
Madam Chair, I have nothing to add.
Thank you very much. So now I have a number of other people who would like to speak to this. Ms. Hines.
So, preponderance, to my mind, adds opacity and confusion, and reduces accountability. Preponderance, as defined, is the quality or fact of being greater in number, quantity- Preponderance, as defined, is the quality or fact of being greater in number, quantity, or importance. Couldn't be any less clear what we mean by "preponderance," so I can't support this.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. I have Ms. Keys-Gamarra, followed by Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been actually waiting to speak for quite some time, because I couldn't disagree with you more, Ms. Schultz. Your statements have mischaracterized what I have said and what a number of people have said. So, with respect to accountability, it is very clear to me that the way that this is currently written with the amendment, that the accountability is to the board, the forum topic is brought to the board, and it cannot go any further without board approval. The other thing that I think has been mischaracterized here is the idea that bringing forth a forum topic is somehow not representative of the people that we represent in the community. When I bring forth a forum topic, it is largely because people in the community have been talking to me. And one of the things that I found extremely disturbing coming on this board with the Justice High School was that it was constantly argued that somehow the voices of the people who wanted this change was not the people that should have been listened to. And that is offensive to me, and it is offensive to the numerous people in the community that had an outcry. And the other part of this mischaracterization that I think is harmful is you describe my statements as putting forth a moral obligation. I offered an explanation of why we talked about Confederate ties and what that meant. So, I would ask you respectfully to please not re-characterize my words, because I know exactly what I'm saying. And I also have an opportunity to argue in court on occasion, and I know that folks who may not have the facts on their side like to confuse the issue. And I'm not saying you're necessarily doing that on purpose, but I think a lot of this discussion has led to that. So, I will not support your motion, because I do think accountability is already built in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. McLaughlin.
So, Ms. Schultz, I do understand where your concern is on this one, and especially trying to sort through what's going to happen here. But part of what a lot of us have been talking about tonight to the community on this issue is that the forum is two board members who have connections to that particular school. And at-larges, as we understand, we want to respect and value that they're elected by everybody in the county. So, they do represent all of the community. So, they're one piece of it. The other board member, if we try to start delineate this further and further, the best example I can give you, because it depends on which adjective we end up using, significant, preponderance, majority, you and I both share Lake Braddock, and we usually debate on whether you've got 60, I have 40, I have 45, you have 55. And then there's Woodson, where I have 60%, and then there's a whole lot of other school board members that have, you know, pieces of that other 40%. And yours actually threw a boundary change, you have very tiny number now at Woodson. But that would be an example of, you could say you heard in the community that people feel they want to change Woodson High School. So, you could bring it to the forum with any one of the at-larges and say, hey, we're bringing a forum topic, we're going to change the name of Woodson High School. I would say in that forum, I'm sorry, I represent 60% of that school, I represent a large portion of the community in which the school sits, no one wants that name changed, so I'm going to ask my colleagues, do not grant even the consideration of this, because it's going to create a lot of turmoil and there's no justification for it. If I do a good enough job, then the other board members are going to listen to the two who brought it to the forum and listen to me, and maybe some others join in the chorus with me and say, you know what, thank you, you two for bringing it forward, but Megan and the others made a compelling argument, we're not interested in changing that name, so we're voting it down, and that is the end of it. So, I don't feel as worried about being able to say, by what adjective does that magisterial board member need to have? Because in the end, it's the board who's going to decide if it even lives to be considered, to be considered. It could never come out of forum, and that would be the end of it. And that's the checks and balances that I believe happens through the forum. So, I don't particularly like the word "preponderance," because I was reading it, looking up as well, it is a legal terminology, and in terms of people understanding, "preponderance" is weight or significance. So, if we've gone with majority, I still wouldn't support that either, because you can have really close majorities between the two. So, I understand where you're going with this, I'm comfortable we've got checks and balances here. I don't feel like, one of the things we learned in the prior name change experience was, the more adjectives we put in there, then the public ended up parsing it out, and in fact, we found ourselves having to explain in a courtroom what was it going to mean and how was it defined by the board.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you. I am going to oppose this amendment. We don't limit what board members can bring to a forum. When have we ever limited what board members can bring to a forum? We haven't. This is already a higher bar than we have on anything else, that we have to have two board members to bring a forum topic. Today, I could bring a forum topic on a school outside my district, and I'm within my rights to do it. Now, typically, we don't, both because we consider it a matter of courtesy, and we consider it that the magisterial board member is in touch with their community, so we don't do it, but there's nothing keeping any board member currently from bringing a forum topic on something in someone else's district, there just isn't. I mean, and I'll give an example, I was one of the foremost opponents of closing Clifton. What business was it of mine? I didn't live there, I didn't have one student there. And not, this was before Ms. Schultz's time, but the magisterial board member at the time wanted to close it. But community members came to me, and I was well within my rights of expressing a view that was counter to the then-magisterial board member. We don't limit that. I mean, this is already a higher bar than we have on anything else. So, I don't see how we can limit it again. But going back to what others have said, it does require a majority of the board to trigger, to trigger just consideration of this, and then we have a fairly elaborate system of two comment periods before we can change the name. I am going to push back too on, we did not manipulate the process for Jeb Stewart. We didn't manipulate that process. We used that process, it wasn't as clear as it might have been, it was a fairly messy process, but it was the process that we had, we did not manipulate that. Going back to what others have said too, there's a lot of misinformation out there about what we're doing and where we're heading with this, but I'll save those comments for the next round. But this simply makes no sense to add yet another requirement, not only two board members, but it has to be, you know, a very specific one. You know, all of us are elected to use our judgment on these things. So, I oppose this amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Schultz?
So, this is why good, healthy debate at the board table is productive, because actually, I'm going to thank Ms. Evans and Ms. McLaughlin. You specifically helped move the conversation forward. I am going to step back and say that while, and she's leaving the table for right now, Ms. Keys-Gamarra appeared to be offended by my attribution that this is a moral argument. Those were the terms that were discussed during the Jeb Stewart name change, that we had a moral obligation as a board. And it was said many, 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 many times that this was a moral obligation. It was said by members of the community, it was said by advocates, it was said by board members. So, my use of the word "moral obligation" in the discussion that was entwined throughout the conversation by both members of the public this evening and members of the table, this is how we've lost our way, because we're talking about a policy right now, but right behind the policy is one school. And the one school is being associated because it's a Confederate-named school, except there's other schools. So, we're into, and I still think it should be a preponderance, I would say, for example, I have 38 to 39% of Fairfax High School. I don't have the majority of Fairfax High School, but I have a preponderance. I get that it's a different jurisdiction, but that would be a perfect example, that there's a significant number there. And I do think it should be somebody that has a significant representation. Clearly, it's not going to pass, so we can go ahead and vote on this. But I specifically entreat my colleagues that it is discussion at the table, this is actually why Robert's Rules is used. It's a very ancient form of governance that allows very disparate parties on very difficult issues to come to a decision through the use of Robert's Rules, if it's used appropriately, and to arrive at a decision. Not to have a baked-in solution, but to use logic, use rhetoric, use debate in order to come to a better decision. And I thank my colleagues, Ms. Evans and Ms. McLaughlin, for being so articulate in their explanation. I understand you're not going to support this.
With that, I will call for the vote on the amendment to the main motion, the amended main motion that Ms. Schultz has put forth, which would be to insert the words "a preponderance" after the term "at least one magisterial board member representing," insert "a preponderance" of students, and then pick up the existing language, which is "of students attending the facility and one at-large school board member." All those in favor of Ms. Schultz's amendment? We have Ms. Schultz and we have Mr. Wilson. All those against? We have Ms. Strauss, we have Ms. Hines, we have Ms. Palchek, Mr. Malkelveen, Ms. Darrenack Kofax, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Evans. Those abstaining, since I don't quite understand enough as to what you're trying to do here versus other language that could have been in there? So, that motion fails. So, if we could remove that, and we will go back to a discussion of the amended main motion. And I have Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I do want to speak to some concerns that have been raised at the board table as well as in the public regarding what will these changes mean, and, you know, what are we really talking about here? And I appreciate that many of my colleagues have been trying to say that we went through a very, very difficult name change process with Stewart to Justice High School. And the board was really mindful, and that's why we supported Mr. Wilson's request to say, let's go back and look at what we had in policy and in regulation, and see if we could do better on a going-forward basis, with the recognition that the justification for changing the Jeb Stewart name, that we certainly had Robert E. Lee as another school for consideration. We talked about that in work sessions, I am on camera saying, you're going to change Jeb Stewart, how are you leaving Robert E. Lee in place? So, then we have Ms. Darrenack Kofax, who brought forward her forum topic, which, as I'm looking at the news article pulled in front of me, that it was on February 7th of 2019, that she brought forward and said, here's what we want to direct the superintendent out of that forum. And one of the things is it said is, we direct the superintendent to provide the board via a work session information on the schools named after Confederate soldiers, named after individuals with Confederate ties. It says specifically from our own board docs, in a staff research has determined that there are three schools named after Confederate soldiers, and four named after individuals with Confederate ties. Of the three named after actual soldiers, one is Sidney Lanier Middle School, and at that work session, we determined, that's the City of Fairfax School is not under our jurisdiction or authority to make any decision about Sidney Lanier. So, that took that one off. That brings it down to two schools that are considered named after Confederate soldiers. Well, Mosby Woods is the name of a housing development. So, what the board, whether it's this board of 12, whether it's the next board of 12, they can make that decision. But this notion that there are 31 schools with Confederate ties, and that the school board is going to commit $30 million toward that effort, I mean, this is what I actually heard last night from someone in the community. And yes, we are in a political environment right now, but nothing could be further from the truth. This board speaks as a body. There are 12 of us as the audience, and God bless our superintendent and the staff that are still here, 12 individuals, 12 different perspectives. What Ms. Hines might believe on the issue of our school names may not be where I'm at, but Ms. Hines was elected to represent her district, I was elected to represent mine. Collectively, as a body, seven or more of us have to decide anything. And we've now just said in this policy that it will include a very robust engagement with the community, with multiple opportunities for them to speak with us. So, just because out of a forum topic, the board says, we'll now consider this examination, now it's going to go through a full month of the community getting to talk with us and say, well, I'm glad you wanted to consider the idea, and we're telling you, there's not the support for it. Or the community come forward and say, it's about time, I don't know what took you guys so long. In the end, though, the 12 of us will have to be making our own individual decision on any school renaming. And I certainly am proud of the record I've built on my eight years of service on this board, that I am always fiscally conscious of every dollar that this school system spends, but that I'm also going to be very mindful when we talk about having a school like Robert E. Lee that has been identified, and nothing's being hidden from the public, we've talked about it now for more than several years. We're just mindful that if and when some board members want to bring that forward and say they have a specific school they want to rename, do we have a better process in place for it? And I will just say it one more time, because it bears repeating, we can't control what the public says, but I darn sure hope that my colleagues will join me in saying, staff research showed there are three high schools named after soldiers, and only two of them are in under our authority. That's it. The other four, you know, again, I've not even heard anyone in the community mention Haycock, Lee's Corner, Sangster, or Shreve Wood. My other 11 colleagues are more than welcome to bring that up to a forum topic, but those are the six that have any authority and have been identified by our staff and are recognized as being something for any board member to want to bring forward.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I don't see, oh, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, four years ago, this board modified the same policy about the same time in the year, it was actually a little later, I think in December, to allow for a name change of an existing school if there was a compelling need. And I re-listened to that conversation, which included, you know, comments by members of this board about the importance of getting support of the community, that there was a robust community process that was being developed by the superintendent. a robust community process that was being developed by the superintendent, and the vote happened and the changes were made. And I think that one of the consistent themes that I hear in my community is that the perception of the community is that we're not direct in what's happening. So when that amendment was made to the policy, there was already a plan to rename Jeb Stewart High School, but the change to the policy didn't include anything about Jeb Stewart High School at that time. The conversation included, you know, compelling need and, you know, whether or not there was going to be community engagement if we ever did want to rename a school. But yet, the board members knew that there was going to be a renaming in the offing. And I think that in this case, you know, I guess fast forward, so when the Jeb Stewart renaming process started, the Jeb Stewart community that was concerned, led by the Jeb Stewart Alumni Association, read the regulation that said that there would be meetings and surveys and other tools to determine the extent to which there's community support for changing the school facility name, and if there's sufficient support to change the school facility name, the proposed name for consideration will be solicited. So there was a process that was conducted by the then-superintendent, and there was quite a bit of opposition, actually, to the name change at Jeb Stewart. And I think the community then felt that, "Well, wait a minute. If you're going to continue going forward despite the significant opposition, really what you meant to say to us was that all of that really wasn't that meaningful about soliciting and determining community support." Which is why I raised the question earlier about the amendment of Ms. McLaughlin, that it didn't include that concept. And I think while that does solve the problem that happened during the Jeb Stewart process, it in fact highlights the problem I'm explaining now, which is that the community feels like we say one thing when we really actually are planning to do something different. And that frankly happens over and over. And I hear it from the community on a number of different issues. And that's, I think, what we're doing tonight. I think that the change is tonight to change "compelling," which may not be the most artfully crafted language, to just being appropriate, is because there are schools that will be renamed. And those schools, whether or not there's six or seven or 31, as former superintendent Steve Lockard handed me a list at a work session of, "These are the schools that are connected to the Civil War and slave owners and plantation owners." Whatever the number is, there is a number of schools. And we've clearly identified Lee High School as one of those schools in our conversations. But I think there's more, and I think this is the problem that the community has, is that, you know, we don't need to change this policy from compelling to appropriate. Because we can determine something is compelling, or we can determine it's appropriate. What we really should do is have a conversation that is more frank, and that these are the schools we want to rename, this is the cost of expenditure, and when we have our budget discussions, let's line it up with all the other budget priorities that we have and make decisions. I think that that approach frankly would be refreshing to the community.
I'd like to call the question. Called a question by Ms. Strauss, seconded by Ms. Keys-Gamara. All those in favor? That's Ms. Evans, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Darrenack Kofax, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Palchek, Ms. Hines, Ms. Strauss. And so that's -- that's eight. That motion carries. Back to the main motion, let's vote on it. It's, "I move that the school board approve the revisions to policy 8170, naming school facilities and dedicating areas of school facilities or grounds as detailed in the agenda item and as amended." All those in favor? So it's Ms. Evans, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Darrenack Kofax, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Palchek, Ms. Hines, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Corbett Sanders. That motion carries. Those opposed? Mr. Wilson. That motion carries. Okay. We're going to go to the rest of the agenda. "The elementary professional development school internship program has been removed from tonight's agenda and will be rescheduled for a later date." Consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provides for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 6.01, award the contract for the rooftop unit replacement at Bush Hill Elementary to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Service Mechanical, Inc., in the amount of $305,000, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the board. 6.02, award a contract for the Edison High School STEM Lab Phase One renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Pinnacle Construction, Inc., in the amount of $472,168, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.03, award the contract for the rooftop unit replacements at Fairhill Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Service Mechanical, Inc., in the amount of $266,000, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.04, award a contract for the Franklin Sherman Elementary School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Colbert Roofing, Inc., in the amount of $594,855, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.05, award a contract for the Poe Middle School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, R.D. Bean, Inc., in the amount of $987,825, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 6.06, award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at Rose Hill Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Boland Train Services, Inc., in the amount of $488,244, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.07, adopt the policy to address possession, administration, and distribution of cannabis oil, THCA oil, as detailed in the agenda item. 6.08, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Seven, new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01, adopt the 2020 Fairfax County School Board State and Federal Legislative Program. 7.02, approve the strategic plan goal for resource stewardship fiscal year 19 report as detailed in the agenda item. 7.03, approve the revisions of policy 5015, procurement of professional and consultant services. 7.04, approve the High School Science Basel Instructional Resource Review Committee appointments as detailed in the agenda item. 7.05, approve the Middle School Language Arts Basel Instructional Resource Review Committee members as detailed in the agenda item. 7.06, award the contract for the chiller replacement at Annandale High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.07, award a contract for the Columbia Elementary School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.08, authorize the division superintendent, chief operating officer, or the assistant superintendent for Facilities and Transportation Services, any one of whom may act without the others in consultation with the legal counsel for the school system to negotiate, execute, and administer on behalf of the school board a lease agreement for the instructional program Support Center for Warehouse Space located at 6732 Industrial Drive, Springfield, Virginia, 22151, including all related documentation within the parameters discussed by the school board in closed meeting. 7.09, award a contract for the Robinson Secondary School Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.10, award the contract for the running track replacement at Westfield High School to Field Turf USA, Inc., in the amount of $788,905, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.11, award a contract for the Title IX softball field modification project at Ocean Hall Park Annandale High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contracts on behalf of the school board. 7.12, award a contract for the Title IX softball field modification project at Justice Park, formerly Jeb Stewart Park, Justice High School, to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contracts on behalf of the school board. Eight, superintendent matters. I now call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. Today, actually, this month is October, okay, this is October, and October is National Principals Month. I want to take a moment to honor our outstanding principals in Fairfax County. I got to spend the day with them, or I got to spend yesterday with them, engaged in deeper learning around the theory of action, and we had a great meeting earlier today. And I really appreciate our principals, how dedicated they are for their outstanding service. The other thing I want you to know, today is Ombudsman Day. It's National Ombudsman Day, and we're fortunate to have the Ombudsman Office to serve family students, and now we're actually supporting our employee staff, effective October 1st. Thank you to Armando Perry and Don Clements for their outstanding work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Board Committee Reports is next on the agenda. I call on Ms. Evans for an update on the Governance Committee.
Thank you. We had a very busy Governance Committee meeting. We discussed the forum topic that Ms. Corbett Sanders and I had brought about contracts, and committee members weighed in with their thoughts on how we should provide more oversight. Dr. Braybrand is going to create some recommendations based on those comments, and the decision was made at Governance that we should take that recommendation to a work session, we should ask Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Darrenack Kofax to schedule a work session, and in the meantime, that Ms. Corbett Sanders and I would meet with the superintendent to discuss his recommendations. So that hopefully will be coming to a work session fairly soon. We also did get data on chronic absenteeism in connection with Mr. McElveen's forum topic on civic engagement. We did ask staff to go back and bring us some ideas on how to provide for more civic engagement among our students, which is certainly a worthwhile goal without potentially impacting schools' overall chronic absenteeism rate, which is something we have to watch carefully because of the new accreditation standards. So that will be brought back to us hopefully at our November meeting. We did talk about, and this is relevant to the policy and the reg that we just discussed now, we talked about creating a more orderly and systematic way of reviewing policies and regulations. As you know, we get the No Change Memos, and there's often a long list of policies on there. Governance wanted to create a system by which we can anticipate and have an orderly way for us to do our five-year review. The state requires us to review every policy at least every five years. And our amendment today, Ms. McLaughlin's amendment today, was also in keeping with the Governance Committee's new approach to trying to get more detail into our policies and not leave it entirely up to regulation. We did, because we were looking at several policies on the No Change Memo, where we did want to get more detail into the policy, we did ask the superintendent to review several and bring them back to us at the next meeting. And I will remind my colleagues that they have been sent the revised Strategic Governance Manual, and we're going to have a work session on that in about a month. And I hope board members will remember to send me any suggested changes in that so we can compile them before we have our work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And now we go to Board Matters, and I'm going to call on you again.
Well, thank you. Because the hour is late, I'll just say that I want to thank all the principals. I've been doing the rounds in Mason District and meeting with principals. I've almost completed the rounds, but not quite, and I just want to say how helpful it has been to me to have these meetings and how generous the principals have been with their time. And the only other thing I want to mention is I'm looking forward to meeting with PTA and PTO presidents this Sunday for a conversation about Mason District Schools at my home.
Mr. Wilson.
Pass.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Just briefly, I did want to make note that I will be having my Braddock District office hours next Wednesday, the 16th, at 9:30 a.m. in the Braddock District Supervisor's office, and that I also want to express my appreciation to the North Springfield Elementary PTO, who invited the entire Annandale High School Pyramid community to come to a PTA meeting last night. Ms. Evans and I, along with Regional Superintendent Fabio Zuluaga, had a really great community conversation with everyone about the Annandale Pyramid and just wanting very much to create strong community connections. And so it was really lovely to be there with Ms. Evans, especially since my time with Ms. Evans is growing shorter by the day.
Ms. Keys-Gamara.
She knows how many days it is. I'm going to pass. Good night.
Ms. Darrenack Kofax. I'll be quick. I want to thank Armando Perry and Nardis King and all the PTA and PTO presidents who attended my roundtable discussion on Tuesday. I really appreciate your time and being there, and I think we had a great substantive conversation. Also, thank you to, you know, Teresa Johnson, DeeDee Baylor, and their whole team for the fantastic, Dr. Braybrand too, and your team for putting on the Sixth Annual Mental Health and Wellness Conference. That was done very well and continues to grow and improve every year. Also, thank you to Island Creek Principal, Mr. McCrina, for inviting us to Dr. Braybrand. I tagged along with him to Island Creek, to all the great things that are happening there. I really appreciate it. And thanks to all who came out to my Kofax Coffee last week. I really appreciated the conversation. Have a good night. Mr. McElveen.
Thank you. And it's homecoming season, which is a very exciting time for all of us in the community and particularly our alumni. The past couple of weeks, I've had the honor of participating in three parades at Fairfax, Madison, and Chantilly, and I've made it to a total of, I think, nine homecoming games, which has been great, getting to TJ Langley-McLean, and then this past weekend to, let's see, Lee, Woodson, Centerville, Oakton, and Madison. So that's been exciting. And tomorrow night, I will be playing in a charity basketball game at Marshall High School. And tomorrow night, I will be playing in a charity basketball game at Marshall High School, the proceeds of which will go to their all-night grad party. So hopefully, I'm not too out of shape for that. But again, happy homecoming to everyone.
Ms. Schultz.
Yeah, I just want to do a save the date. Having community office hours on Monday, October 21st, doing both a morning and an evening for the convenience of my constituents at Burke Center Library. The morning is 10:00 to noon, and the evening is 6:30 to 8:30, again, Monday, October 21st. I will also, for my PTA presidents, I have my PTA president's roundtable. I think it's going to be at the Mott Center on Wednesday, October 23rd. And I just also have a save the date for anyone out there to be a part of our terrific FCPS Foundation Luncheon that is going to be at Fairview Park Marriott. Save the date, Wednesday, December 4th, 11:30 to 1:30. Put it on your books. Go online, get your tickets, and help support teacher grants into the classroom. I'll pass.
Okay. Well, I just want to have a couple of comments tonight. I want to thank the Hayfield Secondary School Counseling Department, who asked to review their ramp application, and it's going off today. It's very exciting, all the great work that they're doing with all grade levels at that school. So want to thank them for having me. Additionally, I would like to welcome our newest grand-involved chapter from Gum Springs Senior Center, who will be providing support at Holland Meadows Elementary School. And this is a little off-topic, but I want to thank Enova Health System. Many of you have been so supportive of me as my brother had some major health issues with a couple of strokes three weeks ago, and I am thrilled to be able to announce that with the wonderful doctors and staff at Enova Fairfax, my brother is moving on to physical therapy. And it is just the best news I've had in a month. So Enova, thank you. I know we have a great partnership with you in our schools, but it's also a great partnership with our community. And last but not least, I will be celebrating with my colleague, Delegate Paul Kriesak, our 40th reunion from Groveton High School this weekend. And in addition to the celebration of the 40th reunion, West Potomac will be initiating, they started tonight, their very first Athletic Hall of Fame. And so it's a wonderful celebration weekend, and I look forward to seeing many of my high school friends and my community colleagues over the next few days. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Do we have to go pay attention?
Nope. Just send it out.